Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is July 12, 2017. It's 8:15 PM. Again, I apologize, our caucus meeting ran a little bit overtime, but we'll try to make up the time. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Krajnacki.
Here.
Councilperson Zavirsa.
Here.
E. Park.
Here.
O.
Here.
McMorro.
Here.
M. Park.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Borough Attorney.
Present.
Superintendent of DPW.
Here.
Rec. Director.
Here.
And municipal Clerk. Everyone's present, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please rise for the flight salute. Remain standing afterwards. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where all is stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. We've had several people pass away since our last meeting. They are Dr. Abdullah Yamani, Mary Jane Siska, Porzia Pitielo, Gary Vlajovic, and New York City Police Department Officer Mia Sodas Familia.
Also, Queen Gretchen.
Please add anyone else that you wish to remember. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Dating time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Okay, thank you. So, just a matter of some housekeeping, we have minutes from several caucus meetings, several regular meetings, and several special meetings that have been presented to the council members for their review and approval. And if you can, I'd like to have a motion to approve those now.
One.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please discuss the correspondence that we've received?
We received four pieces of correspondence to the mayor and council. First one is Dorsey and Semra, privileged and confidential. The second one is from the parents of the police academy class nine. Third one is a tort claim received by David De Gregorio, one of our residents. And the fourth letter is from a young resident, Cian Han.
Thank you. The claims for the period from June 15 to 2017 through July 12, 2017, need to be presented by our Finance Chairperson, Councilwoman McMorro.
Thank you, Mayor. I've reviewed the claims for the period June 15 through July 12, and I ask that they be paid.
Can I have a motion? Okay, a second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to roll call.
Councilperson Zavirsa.
Yes.
E. Park.
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro.
Yes.
M. Park.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Department head reports are also distributed to council members, and I hope you've had a chance to review those. If somebody would like to move them in, please do so.
I can move them forward.
No. All right. I can move them. Okay. Please. Can I have a motion to accept them?
One.
Somebody, second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Next up on the agenda is the public portion, and before we do that, I wanted to make a statement about something that's on the agenda that I think some people may want to get up to speak about, but I wanted to speak first on that issue. And that is the first reading of ordinance 17-10, Creation of Position for Public Safety On April 12, 2017, the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council requested the Public Safety Committee, under the chairmanship of Councilman William Wu, to explore the need for the borough to create the position of Public Safety Director. I have also considered this possibility after observing the functioning of the ECPD and its leadership, together with the governance there for over 18 months. Needs to be reiterated that the ECPD is a subdivision of the borough and is subject to the authority of the appropriate authority, which is the mayor and council. The ECPD's operations are overseen by its chief and the mayor and council. During the 18 months that I have been mayor, I have never interfered in any manner whatsoever with such operations, leaving that to the chief and the captains, the current senior management of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department. While I have the utmost respect for the professionalism, hard work, and adherence to the rule of law and best practices by the vast majority of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department, for the reasons stated below, I do not have confidence in the current senior leadership of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department or in the leadership's willingness or ability to eliminate politics from the Englewood Cliffs Police Department. Again, I have the utmost respect for the vast majority of the members of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department, and I told them so. Again, my conclusion is based on 18 months of interaction with the Englewood Cliffs Police Department's senior management. As a borough, we have fully satisfied all our financial and non-financial obligations to the Englewood Cliffs Police Department. We have the additional obligation to provide a safe and secure workplace for our officers free of political and personal influence. Now, my family and I have always been law-abiding and supportive of local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies. I expect law enforcement to abide by the same laws and rules that we are required to abide by. Again, I believe that the vast majority of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department abides and obeys the same rules and laws that most of us abide by. Prior to becoming mayor, I read about the various losses involving the Englewood Cliffs Police Department and wondered how such a well-paid police department, who is recently reported as the second-highest-paid police department in New Jersey with a median salary of $155,000, in a town with very little crime and led by a well-paid chief with a lifetime employment agreement, which I inherited, who last year was reported to be the fifth-highest-paid chief in New Jersey with an annual salary of $223,000, could possibly be involved in so many litigations? Even more troublesome is that only one of the pending litigations involves a party not affiliated with the Englewood Cliffs Police Department or the borough's elected officials. And this strange conduct has continued into my term in office. It seems to me that the increase is an orchestrated effort designed to misdirect attention of the mayor and a callous and political attempt to intimidate me from instituting much-needed reforms in leadership. I'm not intimidated, and never will be, but I am very concerned that the officers who show up for their tours and do an outstanding job are getting caught up in the controversies that are spawned by politics in the workplace. A public safety director will help us preserve all that is good about the Englewood Cliffs Police Department while dealing with its problems. We owe it to our officers. We owe it to our residents. We owe it to society. The number of Englewood Cliffs Police Department-related litigations has grown to nine in number, and I assure everyone here that trying to intimidate the mayor by repeatedly suing him on baseless, made-up frivolous facts has only motivated this mayor to address the problems with the Englewood Cliffs Police Department. Noteworthy is that prior to becoming mayor, I had no dealings whatsoever with the Englewood Cliffs Police Department and did not know any of its members by name other than one person. So, within 12 months of becoming mayor, the litany of litigations against the borough and me commenced as a concerted way to intimidate me from resolving the problems of political policing, racially motivated policing, excessive overtime, inefficiency, overtime as currency, and a pervasive problem with truthfulness. Again, I wish to reiterate, because this is very important to me, that the vast majority of the members do their jobs, day in and day out, without succumbing to politics or other questionable conduct. Again, since I became mayor, I have insisted that all borough employees refrain from any politics in the workplace, and the Englewood Cliffs Police Department, in my opinion, has failed in that regard. In fact, last election cycle saw the Englewood Cliffs Police Department misusing the police patch and further into the political parties' candidates whose campaigns are being managed by the former mayor. This behavior has to stop. The people of Englewood Cliffs have entrusted me with the obligation to make sure that all departments of the borough are functioning efficiently, honestly, and without any political interference. Without any reservation, I support the establishment of the Public Safety Director through the passage of an ordinance as soon as possible. Now, I always speak about facts, so informing my conclusions, I have considered certain facts that I will now share with you. Okay, so, number one, the current budget for the Englewood Cliffs Police Department is $5,773,000. That represents about 34 percent of the borough's 2017 municipal budget of $17 million. This is the single largest component of our municipal budget. The overtime component of the budget is about $300,000. Number two, and this goes to a specific fact pattern, I have seen various versions of reports regarding what has become known as the Mama Mexico Incident. One version has a senior member of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department having an argument with the then-chief, Baur Schmidt, after a dinner at, what was that, a Mexican restaurant and bar in the borough. In one version of the report, it was reported that there was an incident between the then-chief and another senior member of our police department. In another version of the same report dated the same day, the then-chief and the other senior member of the department were discussing, just discussing, a personal matter. What both versions fail to mention is that another one of our officers ended up tearing his pants during the incident. This matter was never investigated independently, and the officer whose pants were ripped skipped over another officer at a subsequent promotion opportunity. This matter, again, was never investigated, which I find odd since it was the Englewood Cliffs Fire Department Chief who actually made the call to the police desk reporting a disturbance. Okay? Logic didn't flow there, folks. Next, a resident has sued the borough after having been fully acquitted on unsustained ludeness charges, an issue where Englewood Cliffs Police Department procedures and evidence handling. One issue that arose in the civil litigation, as I read about it, because it's publicly reported, is that an Englewood Cliffs Police Department officer testified before a grand jury that a key New Jersey State Police lab report for a piece of alleged evidence containing human biological excretions had not yet been issued, when in fact, the lab report was dated nine days before the officer's grand jury testimony. To my knowledge, there has never been an independent investigation into the issues raised. The civil litigation continues, and I will reserve further comment. I have learned that in April 2012, the following took place. A member of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department was sent to the Fort Lee Police Department for a motor vehicle stop regarding the former mayor Parisi's son. The Englewood Cliffs Police Department officer stated that the Fort Lee Police asked the Englewood Cliffs Police Officer if he knew the son. It was not a mutual aid call, and it was at night. Our officer at first did not recall how he was dispatched, but he was on duty here. Eventually, he guessed, in quotes, that he was dispatched by a superior because Mayor Parisi's son was pulled over. The Englewood Cliffs Police Department officer did not take any law enforcement action and stated that the only reason he went to Fort Lee was to confirm that it was former Mayor Parisi's adult son who was with the girl when he was pulled over. The Englewood Cliffs Police Department officer testified that he did not know what it had to do with Englewood Cliffs or the Englewood Cliffs Police Department, and that the former mayor Parisi came and picked up his son. So, the Englewood Cliffs Police Department officer did not know why the former mayor had to pick up his son at a motor vehicle stop. He did not recall making any report of the incident or speaking with the chief about this incident. He recalled, though, being on duty. One can only wonder why an on-duty officer here in Englewood Cliffs went to Fort Lee in a non-emergency and non-mutual aid situation to confirm that the person pulled over was former Mayor Parisi's son. While that officer was at Fort Lee with the former mayor's son, he was not patrolling Englewood Cliffs, and our residents were certainly receiving less policing than they should have been. As far as I know, no independent investigation into that matter was ever concluded. In December 2013, our police officers became a taxi service for Justin O. The following incident was reported by NewJersey.com. Justin O. and Elias De Mooney, both 22, they were adults, allegedly put the driver in a chokehold and took $17 from his pocket after the cab became stuck on a patch of ice. The two men fled the area, walking to the nearby Englewood Cliffs Police Station to request a ride to their homes, which was granted. This is on the papers, folks. By then, the taxi driver had contacted city police and told them he had picked up three passengers in Manhattan earlier that morning. He had dropped one off in Englewood before the car got stuck. He said and told officers that one of his assailants was sporting red holiday festive clothing, according to suffering. The popular bar brawl, SantaCon, during which the revelers dress up as Santa Claus and other Christmas scene characters, was held on Saturday in Manhattan. An Englewood Cliffs officer was passing Palisades Avenue as the driver was being interviewed and stopped to assist. After hearing the description of the alleged attackers, he informed the detective that two similarly dressed men, Santa Claus, had come into police headquarters that morning. Police then interviewed O. and adult at his home and eventually took him into custody. So, the question here is, why? Well, when I read this, I was incredulous. That was back in 2013, and I remain so. Our police department should not be used by the adult children of elected officials to serve as their taxi service. I'm not aware of any investigation ever having been conducted, and I'm actually pretty disgusted by that. Okay? A member of the Englewood-- this is the next one, number six. A member of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department was denied the right to legal counsel and subsequently sued. The borough had to settle this litigation recently. Again, no independent investigation was conducted. Number seven, at the February 2016 regular meeting of mayor and council, an officer of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department announced that the microphone, that I had changed the health insurance benefits for our officers when he knew or should have known that such benefits were changing as of January 1, and state health insurance plan beneficiaries were notified by the state of New Jersey by letter in September 2015. I didn't become mayor until January 3, 2016, although I was being blamed for this. Despite the notices and time before I was mayor, the drama continued, and the officers still tried to cast me a negative light. It was explained to him several times, and he continued his charade. We don't change people's benefits. The state does that. On April 13, we played a telephone recording in this council chambers where all present heard a member of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department ordering, an Englewood Cliffs Police Department desk officer to order others to void certain parking tickets that were given to the friends of the former mayor and to only ticket violators on the south part of the borough. At the same regular meeting, April 13, 2016, we also saw and heard an eruption of loud, angry, and violent protest by members of the audience who are supporters of one of our Englewood Cliffs Police Department members. Several officers were present, in terms of leadership officers being present. No sworn officer took any action to restore order or to eject the bad actors, and the emergency call button was conveniently out of order. When questioned later, the two members of Englewood Cliffs Police Department leadership reported that they did not observe anything out of the ordinary. The viewing of the videotape from that meeting objectively shows a near riot, much of which was encouraged by another member of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department when he repeatedly raised his arms in anger to encourage the disorderly conduct taking place. On May 2, 2016, the deputy chief and I met with members of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department. During that meeting, much was discussed, and it seemed to be going well, until one officer spoke about an incident regarding a borough citizen. Without any encouragement and on his own volition, he told all assembled that he fouled a borough citizen home without stating any law enforcement reason for doing so, because there was none. This is the subject of a current investigation. On June 6, 2016, the PBA local representatives wrote a letter to the chief at his direction misstating certain facts and conclusions relating to the Englewood Cliffs Police Department's cancellation of the 2016 junior police academy in the May 2, 2016, meeting that I had attended with the police department. I was there, and I know what took place. This letter was then released by the chief, by his own admission, to the former mayor and found its way into the press. This was a coordinated smear campaign of the former deputy chief. Moreover, it identified a borough employee by name without adequate disclosure to that employee. This is now the subject of a disciplinary hearing. On August 11, 2016, I received an email from the son of a borough resident claiming that "a member of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department treated him unprofessionally, and perhaps this was an incident of racially motivated policing." The complaining party, who is unknown to me, wrote in part, "I'm curious as to why I was treated in the fashion I was and others who'd done the same were not. This inconsistency is troubling. As one of many Korean-Americans that live here, is it simply glossed over because many in similar situations aren't as easily able to articulate their concern?" The complaining party withdrew his complaint after we learned that Councilwoman O., by her own admission, became involved, which should have prompted an entirely separate investigation regarding witness tampering. To make matters worse, at a subsequent mayor and council regular meeting in October 2016, a member of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department addressed those assembled and accused Councilman Park of not supporting the Englewood Cliffs Police Department because the councilman was concerned about the claim of racially motivated policing. It's just unacceptable. So, a couple more points, folks. The borough has paid out large sums in settling and defending cases involving the Englewood Cliffs Police Department since June 2010. By and large, the cases arose from the actions of senior Englewood Cliffs Police Department leadership. The borough's insurers have paid out over $1 million in settling and defending cases involving the Englewood Cliffs Police Department since June 2010. Again, the cases arose from the actions of senior Englewood Cliffs Police Department leadership. Just to note for yourselves, the overtime that we've paid the Englewood Cliffs Police Department since January 1, 2010 is about $2,200,000. With all the litigations and controversies that the Englewood Cliffs Police Department deals with, I have never received a clear answer as to how much department time is spent dealing with litigations and controversies rather than policing. I keep asking, and I will continue to keep asking. Since I became mayor, again, the borough has fully satisfied all its obligations. There are more matters that I can't comment on now. So, based on the foregoing, though, I have no confidence in the senior leadership of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department, to operate the Englewood Cliffs Police Department in a manner consistent with prevailing law and best practices in terms of operations, working with the appropriate authority, again, the mayor and council, upholding honest, truthful, and non-political application of justice. To the Englewood Cliffs Police Department members who come to work each day and perform at all times consistently with their oath that you and I are bound by, I thank you, and I encourage you to be part of the solution by not tolerating political policing, untruthfulness, intimidation, or other behaviors on becoming an officer. I will back you every step of the way. In the past, societies who have recognized their problems and faced them have found healing and reconciliation for those who have been hurt. I encourage you to come forward by contacting the borough administrator or the borough attorney. Allow me to close by reminding everyone that the biggest losers in our current situation of having a dysfunctional and politically charged police department are our residents and taxpayers. As a borough, we spend a tremendous amount of financial resources to have a professional police force, and yet we encounter problem after problem, litigation after litigation, in a very low-crime environment. We can do better, and we will do better. The fact of the matter is that the current situation is unsustainable financially and This is the price of bad government, politics in the workplace, contracts for votes, and seemingly never-ending corruption. The results came from politicians in both major parties over decades of compromised decisions. I will not be part of that problem, nor will I play along, as many others have done in the past. Over the past several weeks, I have received documents from some of the plaintiffs in the various litigations against the borough. The bona fides is some of these documents are questionable, and I'm going to deal with that tonight, and so too is how they were created, under whose instructions, how they were disseminated, how they were coordinated, whether borough resources were used to create them, and when they were created. Therefore, in addition to requesting that a forensic computer expert be retained, I have requested an opinion from the borough council as to whether I can just make some of these documents received in all of the litigations available to the public online in order for the public to see the level of dysfunction within the Englewood Cliffs Police Department senior leadership. These documents include deposition transcripts and documents produced in discovery. The coordination between senior members of our police department and the local Democratic Party is blatant, and will finally be exposed, not by me, but by their own hand, emails, and documents. Once again, I will not stop my reforms until politics no longer influences the daily operations of our borough. With that, can I have a motion to open to the public? Second. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. Okay, so, just-- no, the public needs to know that we are actually going to add one resolution tonight, which is to vote on the Witty Field renovation. If you're here at the caucus meeting, you would have seen our engineer speak to us about the different options that we have with the approximately million-dollar budget that we have.
Can I get the name of it so I can write it in?
Do you want to give her a name?
Um, I'm just going to-- based on the advice of the borough engineer and of our recreation director, I'm going to make a motion to do--
Just the title for the renovation.
The title of the renovation will be authorizing Public Six Consets Members today--
For the renovation, everybody.
I'm going to make a motion. You can vote now.
Well, we have to group have to follow the Roberts Rules of Order, so we need to disclose to the public that we are going to make that motion. You don't have to vote for it. You know, that's the way we should do it. Sorry. Witty Field renovation. Number six is the option that Councilwoman McMorro will move. Okay, so, if there's anyone from the public, please come forward and state your name and address.
Lynn Norton, Nine Willow Drive. I have to tell you, Mayor, you surprise me more and more each time. I mean, I don't know where fantasy meets reality in that speech you just gave, but there is a wide distance between everything you brought up in reality. I mean, politics? Politics, there's no more politics than sits up there with you guys, but let's go to it. Let's start at the beginning. There, you discussed the performance of the senior management of the police department. Were they riced? Did you give them the courtesy beforehand, before you started talking about things that were totally inappropriate to be discussed?
No one was identified by name.
Uh, senior management. There's only one chief, and there's only two captains, so that's your senior management. So, I think you probably are in a slippery slope right there. Second of all, to bring up an issue with the child of anybody is despicable, disgusting, and I would hope beyond your morals and ethics. You know what? It could just as easily have been any one of your kids sitting out there.
No, it wouldn't have.
And I hope that at least of you--
No, actually, no.
You know what? It doesn't matter.
No.
It doesn't matter.
And it's an adult child, and what's really despicable is that our police department was misused for personal gain.
It's my time, not your time. It's my time to speak. It was despicable, it's disgusting, and a child, I don't care how old they are, should never be brought up in this forum. What else are we talking? There were so many things. Oh, my God. So, you know what? You're talking about politics. The first thing you did, you're here one month, you start an investigation into the police chief. You don't know him. You said that yourself. I don't know anything that goes on. Of course, Mrs. McMorro, I'm sure, gave you an earful, but you didn't know him, and you started a witch hunt from day one. All right? The first three months, you're already having somebody investigate. Then the next year comes around, you're doing the same thing. I mean, you have a craw in your bonnet that you just can't get rid of, and somehow, you're going to go after this chief, no matter how you have to do it. He worked great all those years. Everything worked fine. We never needed a public safety director. Everything worked. The only one who sued was Mrs. McMorro's husband.
That's not true.
You talk about a million dollars.
No, no, no.
You talk about a million dollars. How much did Mrs. McMorro's husband take home from that? I mean, I'm sure it was a large proportion of it. I-- it's like--
Go ahead. You can continue.
You have quite a well-oiled machine, and it's a well-working machine, and here you are, you're just going to throw in, spend more money. You have an administrator, you have a clerk, you have a full-time rec. director. How many more full-time positions do you want to add?
You don't like recreation?
Unbelievable. No, but we handled recreation. We had a full-time--
Handled or mishandled? Which was it?
Oh, yes, thank you. We handled it quite well. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought you said mishandled.
Yeah, I'm sure you did. You're mine to make things up, Mayor. You continue to make things up.
And for the record, you mishandled a lot, Ms. Norton. You mishandled a lot.
There are no facts.
You mishandled a lot.
And you mishandled going forward.
Let's talk about Commerce Bank. I don't know anything about Commerce Bank.
Okay, well, let's back up a step.
Okay, so, other things on the agenda besides that fantasy report the mayor just gave.
Okay, that's fine.
Approving a television donation from the senior citizens club to Holy Trinity Church. We are looking in-- as I look at it, it's, we are encouraging the senior citizens' contribution to a-- to a church of sin God, which is, seems completely against the separation of church and state. Doesn't make sense to me that we should be encouraging anything. If the TV set belongs to the senior citizens, indeed, they can give it to whoever they want to and if they want to give it to Holy Trinity, that's certainly their option if their members vote for it. But as a public body, to be encouraging any transaction to a religious entity, no matter what that religious entity is, I would have a question on that.
Mrs. Norton, if I could just respond to that. Uh, the television set, correct, it's owned by the seniors' club.
In which case, it should not have to do with us.
The only thing is, the Borough Administrator just wanted to keep it clean in case anybody questioned it. The seniors did come to us and to me as well and asked, they were different organizations that they approached, they didn't want to throw the TV out. First of all, they accepted an LG donation of a brand-new TV and rather than throwing out the television set, they approached different organizations, they're not just all religious, and Holy Trinity said, "We'll take it." So it was just as far as, they accepted the donation, they just wanted to pay it forward, that's all it is.
There's no issue with that, it doesn't belong on a mayor and council agenda.
Well, we wanted to just keep it on paper in case anyone asked that we approved it, that was it.
We had asked for a legal taking of that.
Right, and just for the record, it is not our TV, it does belong to the seniors' club.
That's what I'm saying, just let the seniors vote, let it not come through here and have us getting involved in religion.
Okay, thank you.
And then I guess it's just hiring, hiring investigator, computer forensics investigator for this non-criminal police internal affairs matters. You're looking to hire a public safety director, you need another position? I mean, I don't believe you should be hiring either one, but that's besides the point.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll leave the rest to somebody else, thanks.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes. Yes.
Deborah Sabari, 106 Hollywood Avenue. The public safety director, what exactly does that position entail? What will they be doing? How will this position regulate your concerns going forward?
Um, it's pretty specific and set out in the ordinance.
Just briefly, yeah, I'm just trying to understand how, is this person, is the chief now going to answer to the safety director?
The public safety director is on, is above the chief of police. But the chief of police still is protected by his Bill of Rights. The public safety director's authority is not just supposed to extend into the statutory Bill of Rights of police chiefs. So the crafting of the, uh, police director's ordinance that we have in front of us does specify, I think, about 20 paragraphs of authority subject to the chief of police's Bill of Rights. And there are certain things, really, the purpose of a public safety director is to look at and establish policies and procedures. The chief's requirement is to effectuate those policies and procedures, to operate, to make sure the daily operations on a day-to-day basis, that's more the chief's function. A public safety director, and it's not just obviously the police department, it's also with respect to our emergency rescue, our office of, well, we don't have an office of, we have an emergency management coordinator and the fire department. So this is a governing type of thing and that person will report to the mayor and/or the Borough Administrator as well as to the mayor and council.
So...
And I'll give you an idea of...
Why don't you give me an example? So what if, he has a list of things that he's concerned about. What is this person, how is this person going to change that? If they're not part of the PBA and they're not part of our police department?
Yes, I understand.
Are they an attorney?
No, I don't know, you know, there's qualifications that are set out in the ordinance.
I'm sorry, it was just out today, so I couldn't read it.
You don't have to read it. There are qualifications in the ordinance and there are other considerations that will be made in the interviewing process, not just what's set forth here. However, however...
There must be some guidelines.
Obviously, by ordinance, we are, the governing body can create the position and it's done in other towns and it's meant to supplement and assist the public safety entities that he liaisons over. And it's meant to assist the council, it's meant to assist the Borough Administrator, for example.
I'm not questioning your ability to do that, I want to understand what qualifications this person will have that makes him...
Or her.
Or her. A better candidate, or a candidate to work with the chief and give the chief advice on how he should run his police department.
Well, it's not necessarily how the chief thinks he should run his police department.
Well, how the chief runs his police department, not how he thinks, how he runs.
The police department. In the Borough Mayor form of government, the chief is the head of that department. A public safety director is above the chief, above the fire chief, above the emergency coordinator, and it's meant to be a liaison to the administration, the administrator, and to the mayor and council. One of the things that is a, one of the functions that he's going to do, or she's going to do, one that is set out, is with respect to dealing with the litigations. Dealing with specifically making sure that the preservation of confidential documents is continued. Making sure that discovery requests are answered for the litigation matters, I'm not talking about municipal courts, I'm sure they have that all set up, for the litigation matters, there are procedures and policies set forth so that we can be assured, the Borough, which is sued in all these suits, can be assured that discovery requests are being properly addressed.
Who would normally handle those?
I'm sorry?
Who would normally handle those requests to get these documents?
Certainly is up in the air as to what was passed then. Currently, those are being handled by the Borough Administrator at this moment. That's my understanding. And some of them are Oprah requests to the Borough Clerk, but they're also really discovery requests.
So would this person be handling Oprah requests also?
No, this person would be assisting in making sure that Oprah requests are answered properly in the confines of a discovery litigation.
And what are the salary guidelines for this position?
We don't have a salary yet.
Well...
Oh, you want to know what's typical?
I mean, you must have a budget in your mind that you're willing to pay for this.
The Borough Administrator is not here tonight, she's on, she's out this week or something, but I'm sure she's going to be investigating all of that and I think the, I think along with a couple of other resolutions that we have on there...
Right, but you're voting to hire a safety director tonight or no?
No.
Okay, okay.
We're creating a position.
So before you vote, you'll know what, you'll all know what the dollar value of that is.
The ordinance doesn't require us to put a salary in there. It's a creation of a position. Whether or not we fill it in the future will be the subject of a separate resolution.
Okay, I, my concern is what that's going to cost the taxpayer.
Ms. Sabari, those are good questions. Just to expand on one of them is that we have found out recently that much of the discovery that's produced from the police department is coordinated, not with the administrator, but within the pool of plaintiffs within the police department who are suing the Borough. And that's inappropriate.
Well, you know, I can't comment to that because I don't work in the police department and I'm not on council. So I don't have the information that you have.
I have seen with my own eyes the coordination of plaintiffs and their lawyers with our police department.
Well, you know, I was trying not to comment on your speech today.
And the vast majority, right.
But I have to tell you, I've lived in town 27 years and it's been a good 27 years. I've never seen it, it's crazy, it looks like our police department is the majority of our lawsuits. And I know what your opinion is, I've just heard it. But again, you're not looking at any of the great things that this police department has done over the last 30, 50 years. So you're focusing in...
I have shared with the PBA...
I think you heard about all the negative things.
No, he commended all the offices that were done.
No, he commended them, he didn't say why.
You missed it seven times.
He didn't say what they were doing and didn't commend the police team, who's been in his position for quite some time. So no, I don't think we focused at all on any of the positive.
I don't reward tenure, I reward results.
Well, you've chose to pick out a few things.
Just a few, just a few.
And you chose to mention people's children, I don't agree with that, but you know what, I don't want to have this argument with you because...
What kind of world do you want to live in?
I don't, listen, I'm not privy to what you have as councilpeople. So you're saying what you're saying, I don't know if it's true, I don't know if it's fantasy.
You read about it, it's all public, everything I said tonight...
Yes, I can read the lawsuits and I will because obviously you've given your opinion.
No, she's bringing up a good point and I agree, the Borough Attorney needs to look into. All discoveries should be made public for everyone to see. I want everybody to see what we're seeing because until you see...
I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that.
Until you see what we're seeing, you're not going to understand, I want everybody to see. And I think all lawsuits should be, there's no confidentiality agreements. From when Perrino...
I don't have a problem with that.
Then we're all going to be...
But if you can't pick and choose, Cal, you can't pick and choose.
All of them.
It's got to be all of them.
That's right, all of them.
Okay, it's got to be all, let the people make their own opinions.
Absolutely.
We don't need to hear the mayor's opinion.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think everybody should make their own.
I want everything else, I want you to be able to read whatever you want.
Okay, so let's move on to the actual agenda. I noticed that we're accepting the audit of 2016. So I know that I had concerns about some money being taken from the capital account and being used for tax appeals and then being transferred back in at the end of the year through an emergency appropriation. And I've read the audit report and in fact that did happen and they just treated it as a transfer, that the money was then taken out of the operating account and put back into the capital account. It's nice that it was put that way and that there are no notes made to the audit, which I will further pursue later because it was, you can call it an error...
Are you not a professional doing something improper?
Yeah, actually I am, but that's okay, I've already done it at the state level. Um, now, that being said, also in the audit, on Note 16, potential exposure, tax appeal to two larger, two of the largest tenants in town, that we have an exposure of anywhere between $840 million to $1.1 million. I specifically asked, $840,000 to $1.1 million, I specifically asked if we had any concerns about future tax appeals coming up, and I was told no. And here I get this 2016 audit, which didn't come out until just recently, and of course it says that we have this exposure and that we would either bond it, we most likely have to bond it, I don't know how else you would pay it, but you very clearly said that there was nothing out there that would make a big dent, that was a big issue here. So what happened?
Actually, that's not what was said, what was said was we gave you the specific items that we knew about. The CFO's not here, Lizette has that paperwork. The ones you're referencing, I don't believe that that's for this year, I'm not the CFO though.
It was a 2016 audit.
Right.
And it noted tax appeals that were currently in progress.
You did an Oprah request and we provided you with all the documentation that we had, Ms. Sabari. So everything that you have, what we have.
Again, this is a note by your professionals, right? You have to rely on your professionals when you're preparing your budget, right? I understand that, I don't expect any of you to be able to do that. I expect you to rely on your professionals. But when you turn around and say, "I gave you what you offered," okay, when you were preparing your budget, as far as you were concerned, there was no great exposure out there, you would have put money aside for future tax appeals
That is still my understanding.
Of $840,000 to $1.1 million. It's a fact, it's in the audited financial. So what I'm saying is, is that if we can't trust our professionals...
That's a word, give me...
This will be number two, this will be number two now, this tax appeal note, which was done by the auditors. So if you're saying to me that you had no idea because you told me that there was nothing there, then there's a problem, your professionals aren't talking to you, that's a lot of money.
That we gave you the copies of, there were small...
I understand, I'm not questioning the small ones. I'm questioning the fact that we were told that there was nothing substantial out there and you're saying that the auditors didn't tell you because otherwise you would have made arrangements in your budget to bond for those things. The minimum was $840,000. So that's a problem. How can we depend on our auditors as taxpayers to make sure that everything is in the budget if they're not telling you about it? Okay?
You know, right.
Take a look at the audit.
Just say one thing. So the audit takes a wide array of information. The Borough Attorney writes a letter giving my opinion on pending litigation and what financial impact it could have. It is not deemed material unless it is over a certain amount, which I think is...
If it wasn't material, it wouldn't have been in the audit.
So, in this, this year, so the Borough Attorney...
Which year are you referring to? 2016 or 2017?
Please listen, the tax appeal attorney, the Borough Attorney, and the wide array of information that the auditor takes is due on April 22nd or 25th or June 1st, some May.
No, it was actually due on February, the end of February, and then you were actually penalized for every day that was late.
Okay, that's the budget, I don't think that's the audit.
No, that's the audit.
No, the audit's earlier.
Also, whatever.
It doesn't matter, that's not the point.
Anyway, here's the point, the tax appeal attorney gave an opinion on future tax appeals.
Right, exactly.
We don't know when the, when that amount, if it ever does, will come forward. That is an opinion of the tax attorney. We have pending litigations and at some point they're going to come due. That's where the information came.
Right, and you have to budget for it.
And you understand that it's supposed to be as of 2016, but he's forecasting for the future.
What he's doing is, there is something currently pending.
Yes.
Okay?
Correct.
Okay, so it's pending.
The one you're...
I don't know how long, it wasn't in the previous year's audit.
If I, I don't know, I have to go over with this.
So there's some reason why, there's actually, not only mentioned, it mentions dollar values. Anywhere, it will cost us anywhere between $840,000 to $1.1 million. Take a look at it. I'm more than happy to come in and talk to the business administrator if that's who I need to speak to.
Who was doing the tax appeals, all I'm saying is what I saw for this year's audit.
Are you a CPA?
No, I'm not CPA.
Okay, thank you.
Does that matter? I know how to read a financial statement, I'm not a CPA by training.
But you're not an auditor by training.
No, but I work with the auditors every day, so I know how it works. Mr. Mayor, really, did you read the audit? Can you explain it to me?
I could.
You know, well then, tell me what the answer is.
I actually did pass the CPA exam and I could explain it to you.
Great, but obviously you weren't involved enough in the budget to make sure that the money was in there. Unbelievable.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard, please?
It is six years. So if it's never been audited before...
Yes.
Karen Geiger, 270 Alfred Englecliff, obviously. First, I want to say that in all the years that I have been present at Board of Ed meetings, Planning Board meetings, and mayor and council meetings, I have never heard anyone ever talk about the children of elected officials. And I think that is hitting below the belt and is despicable, no matter what the allegations.
Adult children, and we're all children of somebody, aren't we?
I didn't ask for a comment, I made a comment. Number two.
Yeah, I know, because I don't like it.
Number two, the audit, $840,000 to $1.2 million exposure for future tax appeals as described by the Borough Tax Attorney. That's what the audit says and LMS the mayor said in public session that all of our major tax appeals were behind us. It really isn't consistent. Yes, we did and I pulled the tapes.
That's what you...
Now, number three.
That's what you said.
This is my, no, I didn't say anything about tax appeals being behind us.
Can you lower that so she can be more comfortable, please?
I don't need you to lower this, I don't need the mic, I will speak up a little higher so you can hear me. On the issue...
I just want you to be comfortable.
On the issue of lawsuits. There are currently at least six lawsuits that affect our police department. They include, most of them...
Nine.
There are six that I'm going to discuss that affect our police department. There may be others that I'm not aware of, but six that I am going to discuss. Most of them include, most of those lawsuits... Most of them include, most of those lawsuits vary, but they include allegations of harassment of police officers by other police officers, creating a hostile work environment, allegations of violation of civil rights by the mayor and council of police officers, allegations of unlawful interference in the operation of the police department by the mayor and council, and allegations of sexual harassment by a supervising police officer to a subordinate who is gay. Tonight, you have on your agenda the acceptance of the approval of the settlement of one of those lawsuits, and you also have another one for approval of actual settlement. Englewood Cliffs taxpayers and our insurers will pay almost a half a million dollars, based on the decisions tonight, to two police officers. I'm not going to talk about the McMorro settlement. It was decided over six months ago. But I do want to speak about the settlement that is proposed for Lieutenant Mura, in which he will be paid a hundred and ten thousand dollars, according to the statements read into the record by our borough attorney on May tenth. As part of this settlement, Lieutenant Mura will also be retroactively promoted to captain, a rank that he was not given during his years of service to the community. As you all know, a police officer in New York City was recently gunned down in a mobile command center, assassinated in the line of duty. She received a well-deserved posthumous promotion. She was a hero. What has Mr. Mura done to deserve a retroactive promotion? Why would we give that to him? Why? Because it will increase his lifetime pension, and we, as New Jersey residents, will pay him for the rest of his life at a higher rate because of this reclassification. Lieutenant Mura was also the officer involved in a four-day-long disciplinary hearing in 2015, presided over by Judge Gita. One year ago, Judge Gita issued two reports, excuse me, on his findings and recommendations. Although the mayor and council continue to refuse to publicly release Judge Gita's findings, we know from the PBA lawsuit, a lawsuit filed by all of our police officers, they alleged that Judge Gita, quote, "found that there was findings of untruthfulness which occurred during these hearings," unquote. Dishonesty in a police officer, if true, is a very serious issue. Yet, on December fourteenth, 2016, the mayor and council, in a partisan vote, dismissed all the charges against Lieutenant Mura without explanation and without reference to Judge Gita's findings. Contrary to Judge Gita's written instructions and the requirements of the Open Public Records Act, the borough has repeatedly refused to release the Gita report and recommendations after, even after, the mayor and council dismissed the charges against Mura. Oprah requests for such information has been repeatedly denied, despite what you said this evening. Any privileged information on those reports could have been redacted. And why are the closed session minutes of the December fourteenth meeting still not completed or released? It has been over seven months. The only fair and logical conclusion that one can draw from the repeated refusals to hide these documents is that the mayor and council are hiding something. I'm sorry, to release these documents, is that the mayor and council are hiding something. Perhaps Judge Gita did not clear Lieutenant Mura of the disciplinary charges. Certainly, the terms of the proposed settlement agreement described at the May tenth meeting would lead a reasonable person to conclude that he was not cleared. Why else would you stipulate that Mura never be allowed to work in any capacity in our Why else would you stipulate that only a standard reference for Mura be given? More significantly, why would you ever absolve Mura, or any individual for that matter, for any acts that might have been committed that you don't know about yet, or that will ever be committed in the future? I urge each of you to vote very carefully tonight on the item on the agenda. If you believe in the rule of law, and in right or wrong, you should not approve this settlement and vote no. If you decide to settle, you will be rewarding someone for simply filing a lawsuit, irrespective of the merits. You will be sending out a very disturbing message that in Englewood Cliffs, litigation is the best way to promotion, not merit, not dedication, and not hard work. Thank you.
Just, Mayor, for the record, the settlement does not call or characterize everything that the citizen just stated. The agreement speaks for itself. That's your interpretation of my public statement.
So, just for everybody who was not here earlier, we did have a moment of silence for the slain New York City police officer that was referenced in the citizen's dissertation. With respect to settlements that the citizen mentioned, those all arise out of the behavior of people other than the people on this dais. So, you're looking at the cleanup crew here. We have to clean up the messes that other people create, okay? And the way we do that is by resolving problems and settling. And by its definition, a settlement is each side leaving equally unhappy with the result, okay? Anybody else?
Lauren Eastwood, Four Wheeler Drive. First, I have a question that comes out of what Mrs. Geiger had just said. Mrs. Geiger has said at more meetings than I can count that the Gita report is not public, that the borough won't release the Gita report, that they've refused repeated Oprah requests for the Gita report. Well, if that's the case, if it's not public, I'd like to know how the contents of the Gita report ended up in the PBA lawsuit. Because the members of the PBA are members of the public just like me for obtaining information, and if it's not public, it's not public. And I think that is something that the borough should be looking into, how it got into a lawsuit if it's not public. I also think that, in the interest of transparency, the borough should be moving forward to eliminate confidentiality agreements entered into by the previous administration. My understanding is that there are confidentiality agreements in at least three pieces of litigation involving taxpayer money, the Robert Agresta lawsuit, the McMorro lawsuit, and the Tellza lawsuit. Since the taxpayers are paying to defend this stuff, and are paying the settlements on it, it seems to me that the taxpayers should have a right to read everything.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
And I would like you guys to take action to eliminate these confidentiality agreements and make the discovery public.
Point of order, Mayor, excuse me, Ms. Eastwood, I'd like to add something else to that. Carter Carsten, under whoseever direction, I don't know, I'm going to assume it was under, well, mayor, former mayor, was in charge at that point, put a gag order on a tape that I received under Oprah. It had to do with the Commerce Bank litigation, and what happened was, they were in closed session, and they left the tape on. And let me tell you what I heard on that tape that they were talking about in closed session. Ms. Norton, you were on the council then. Mr. Ramon, you were on the council then. I moved to have that gag order received and have that tape placed on our website so that every resident can hear what Carter Carsten told the members of the council at that time. I'm making a motion right there.
Can we send?
I'm making a motion to direct this borough attorney to remove that gag order that was placed on me, not to disseminate.
We need to get out of closed session.
That's all right. We'll put that later.
All right.
We should be transparent, and the president needs to know everything.
Yeah, if it's the same tape as in the paper, as was in the newspaper, wasn't that the tape where Carter said it's an illegal bank?
Yes, it was.
Finally, we've heard a lot about lawsuits, and all of the people who have discussed lawsuits seem to have a very selective memory. They only remember the recent ones. But since I do believe that everybody should be reading all of these complaints, because a lot of them are extremely disturbing. One, for example, includes an allegation that the police department failed to investigate sexual abuse of a minor. I think that, I will read a list of what is out there, and you can either get them by making a request to New Jersey Courts Online, if they're in state court, or you can get them on PACER if they're in federal court, and you can download most of them yourselves from PACER. They include the Gallagher lawsuit, which was about 2006, and I believe that was in state court, the Shalub lawsuit, which was in state court, the Misk lawsuit, which was in state court, the BV Con lawsuit, the Tellza lawsuit, which is currently pending in federal court, the PBA lawsuit, the Tracy lawsuit, the UST lawsuit, Chief Chocke's two lawsuits, the lawsuit filed by former council president Joseph Vavaro, former councilwoman Melanie Simon, and Karen Geiger, and the Mura lawsuit. And I think that everybody should read them, because the allegations in them are really disturbing, and as far as I can tell, a lot of those litigations were dismissed on technicalities, and the underlying allegations made by the complainants were never investigated, and they should have been.
A point of order, you also have the Perrino lawsuit, which involved UNELE, you have the Agresta lawsuit, and you also have the Commerce Bank lawsuit.
That's a lot of reading, folks. That's fifteen lawsuits.
There are eighty-seven, Ms. Norton.
Okay, anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
Colin Ford, Second Street, Emerson, New Jersey. I've had the pleasure of being a police officer in this town for about ten years.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to just make a quick comment about the resolution being passed about director and about...
Can you step closer to the mic?
Sure. Director and investigator, just a quick comment. Just want to put it on the record that nobody from the bargaining unit was consulted or opinion or anything as far as what we think about, as far as those resolutions being passed. That's all I want to say. That's it. Just letting you know that.
Sorry, maybe they didn't tell you, we had a meeting with the chief was there, and there were members of your bargain... Sorry. There were members of your bargaining unit there. We did have a meeting. I just want to let you know.
No problem. I'm under the impression from what I've heard from my people in the board that we knew nothing about it.
No, Captain Regan...
Let's do this. Let's have a meeting with your, if you want to. We could meet with you as a group, or with your representatives, however you want. Just let me know when you want to meet, and we'll sit down with you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Sergeant Ford.
As a resident and a taxpayer, I am totally disgusted by this. I cannot believe the amount of lawsuits that we're involved in, and we pay the taxes. And now, you know what? I agree with you guys. We should be able to read how much, who got what, what was said, what was allegedly said, what the results were. I think we deserve to have that information. I also want to respond to Ms. Norton's child reference. My ten-year-old son was sent to juvenile court for breaking a town ordinance. That's a child. Adults are adults. This man here, he's somebody's son, too. He's a child, too. And look what happened to him. So, let's get this child thing out of the way. When we become adults, we're no longer children. Okay? Maybe to our parents we're children, but to everybody else, we're adults. And when you want to talk about child, my son was sent to juvenile court, suffered all sorts of nightmares, and started having panic attacks. So, you know what? I don't want to sit out here and ever hear that the mayor's child is insulted, or Ms. Norton's child is insulted. Stop that. They're adults. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Picking up from that, anybody else want to speak? I see Michael Maruski here. You're at my meeting. You're welcome to speak. I'm never invited to your meetings, but if you have something to say publicly, come on up.
Would you please?
I always...
Don't be a worry.
Thank you.
I don't like that.
Thank you. You're welcome to speak.
You should go to the doctor and check the vision, yes? I didn't raise my hand.
The vision's fine.
It's fine.
I know you didn't raise your hand. I'm asking you if you'd like to come up. I'm inviting you. I'm inviting you.
You know what? You're talking about tonight, everything else, what we did. There's other things, too. Why wouldn't you check your case, 2014, 15...
What would you like to talk about? Come on up.
I don't have...
Come on up.
They submitted that into discovery. Don't worry. We're going to put that online.
I'm just never invited to your meeting, so I thought maybe you're at my meeting.
Let it go. Mayor, what do you have?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
I have a question for the Democrats on the council, and that is...
No one raised the microphone, have they?
Michael, Tellz, Line, Churchill Road. I have a question as to how the Democrats feel about the confidentiality agreements. I can't talk about my case, but as a general matter, do you agree with the Republicans who seem to want all the discovery out there and everything open? Because it seems to me that the two sides are saying, well, what's, you know, they're disagreeing on what's going on. If the lawsuits were open, and one side wants them open, does the other side want them open? Do you ask for a no?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
And Ms. Southey, do you feel the same way? So, everybody unanimously feels that they would like the discovery open, and all the information, lawsuits, open?
That doesn't mean that any one of them can release them.
I understand that.
Okay.
But it's not...
Here's a court order or a signed agreement, then each one has to be individually addressed in the context of that litigation.
Yeah, you touch on a good point, actually. This is one of the most frustrating things of being mayor for eighteen months, is that when I want to disclose things from other cases that are relevant, just for people to know what's going on here, there's been a confidentiality order entered into by the borough's attorney, and I basically say in cooperation, or not her, or in collusion with the lawyers appointed by our insurer, just to keep things quiet, and that's not acceptable anymore. And people who are... Some people get upset. They're going to be upset, because there are things in there that blow them up, and I'm fine with that.
Well, if both sides are in agreement, wouldn't that make it easier?
Absolutely. I mean, we will do everything we can to open everything up, because it's been a frustration for me as well.
And the other thing is...
Because people hide behind those things, and it just continues bad behavior.
Can I have a question, then?
He's actually speaking.
Well, there are emails that I requested that was on the agenda last month.
Right, those aren't litigations.
But I'm attorney, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm councilperson, we're all councilpersons here. I don't understand why I can't have that information.
We can speak about that at all business?
But...
All business, okay.
How is that any... There's no confidentiality agreement.
Because he's the citizen who has the microphone.
Okay.
Okay, and another question I had is with the former mayor and his majority council at the time. The mayor put out there, I believe, I can't really talk about it, but I believe it was the police chief first, and then everybody else, then the council members themselves, that in order to protect for those employees who would engage in egregious misconduct, Mayor Parisi put out there that he wanted special, to shield them from judges and juries, actually. I don't have the exact words, but the Republicans voted against it, and the Democrats voted for these protections. I was wondering how everybody feels about that.
He's talking about giving immunity, no, immunity for punitive damages.
Well, it's against public policy. It wouldn't be enforceable, anyway, and, you know, I think the borough council could speak more about that.
Yeah, I have a feeling it's not enforceable, but I'm just curious, you know, came down along party lines, and Mayor Parisi isn't here anymore, how do you feel about the idea of sending it to the taxpayer, or do... How do you feel about the idea of sending it to the taxpayer or do, the, the, the Republicans were against, against it and the Democrats were for it? And I never understood the motivation for it. It was never clear, so I was just wondering how everybody feels about that. It's kind of important.
I just think that if, if council wants to take that up, I need an opportunity to review.
Because it was, was protection for employees against judges and juries.
Sir, I understand that a former borough attorney obviously counseled this mayor and council as a group, not these people, the group.
Okay.
So, I cannot counsel anyone on this at this moment on the floor.
I, I don't think it's an important issue, issue now.
Well, I think it's an important issue, but I just don't know the history.
Okay. But the confidentiality, I think, is a, I'm glad to see that, I think it's a good idea in general because otherwise nobody knows what's going on.
Well, granting immunity for punitive actions is just against public policy. It wouldn't be enforceable anyway. Okay? So, it's just a charade that they hide behind.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Um, Mary O'Shea, Twelve Irving Avenue. Um, just a question. The item that you added to the agenda regarding the, uh, improvements at Johnson Avenue, is that a resolution or an ordinance?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution. So, you're gonna vote on, uh, vote on it tonight to decide which, uh, concept you're going to, uh, choose.
That's right.
Are you going to have any open discussion amongst yourselves prior to the vote, um, so that we can hear your rationale?
We did have a caucus.
No, but I didn't, you didn't talk, people didn't talk about which one they liked.
Yes, they did.
I was listening. I didn't hear.
Yeah, we, we did.
Um, you know, not, I didn't hear that type of, you know, there was questions asked, but I didn't hear anything about which one you liked. Um, all right, so if, if that's the case, I just wanna put my two cents in. Um, my kids played softball, Little League and soccer all through the years in Englecliff's when they were children. On grass, I prefer grass. Um, I'm not, um, an advocate of, uh, artificial, uh, playing field. Um, uh, I realize my husband had mentioned to me that if you have artificial ground, you have to vacuum it to clean it. You have to get a big vacuum to clean it. And I'd also like to know what you're gonna do with, uh, dog poops and dog poops and pee and everything else that's gonna be on there. How are you gonna sanitize it when the children go out to play on it? If it's on grass, it'll be dissipated into the ground. Um, but if it's on a solid, uh, base, it's gonna stay there. So, um, my personal preference is grass. Um, I know that's not, uh, that's in favor for the Little League people, but I, I think it's grass. And I, I don't understand, um, the, uh, Andrew Hippolyte, when he's talking about the, uh, usage, when I think of baseball and I see, you know, a few people, there's one here, one here, one here. It's not like in soccer where they're running back and forth on the grass and pounding it down. I don't understand how on a baseball field, they can compress the dirt that much when they're scattered around the field. It doesn't work out logically for me. Like, with the soccer field, I can understand being compressed, but not the baseball field. It doesn't, doesn't, doesn't resonate with me. So, that's just, just my comments. Thank you. But usually, isn't that clay? That's clay?
Correct.
On the, where they're running, that's clay?
It's just lack of maintenance, Mayor. That's, that's all it is.
Years ago, Jimmy Burlington walked strictly up at the, up at the field and that's all he did is take care of the grass up there and it was, I thought it was, was good. You know, I don't know, you know, what the, the, the maintenance schedule is now or how it's done and I'm not commenting on it because I'm not up there and I know, I, I've heard the comments about divots and this and that. But, um, I really would like to, to keep it natural. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Have a motion to close the public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand. Sorry.
Didn't see your hand back there.
Hi, my name's Rashma. I live on Twelfth Summit Street. First, I'd like to...
What's your name for the...
Rashma Dave, D-A-V-E. Um, first thing I'd like to say is, um, you know, this is the first meeting I'm attending, so I'm really happy that Karen here actually was able to bring enthusiasm to a lot of the citizens that, you know what? You're welcome and you should come and you should come and see what's going on. Um, in fact, I would be very interested to know how our community would respond Facebook Live to some of the behavior that I've seen, um, you know, in those comments and the tweets that we've seen. Um, so I think that Karen did a great job in trying to get people, there's no fear mongering. It's a, you know, bringing enthusiasm to our town, which is fantastic. Pride is always a wonderful, wonderful thing. Number two, I think that, you know, given that we have pride in this town, we should have the ability to, you know, as our field, what's going on, opinions, this and that, and that, you know, bring enthusiasm to our community about all of these things. So, you know, I, I, for me, I mean, I think that it's important that we have more disclosure of what's going on, but I also think that given that we do have disclosure, we do allow people to have much more of a voice because it seems to me that, you know, things are kind of moving quickly because you don't wanna hear the voice. So, I mean, that's, that, well...
That's not true, yeah.
Oh, well, that's your opinion. I'm telling you as my...
Oh, no, no, no.
That's, no, I'm saying that's your opinion. You should have reached out. You should have flyers. I mean, these are things that enthusiasm builds. When you want people involved, you go out and you solicit these sorts of things.
Are you signed up? Are you signed up for our newsletter?
I'm, yes, now I'm all signed up. Believe me.
Can I just make a comment? Yeah, I just wanna address that.
So, I'm really excited to be here.
Yeah, no, thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. We, we love having you here. Um, with regard to the field, uh, we had, uh, four meetings. We invited the public. Uh, two of the meetings, I believe, were just designated for the field.
Now, let's give the public a vote.
No, that's not how it works.
That's not how it works. Why not? I mean, the way, the way, I mean, the way I have read the government and, you know, we're all educated here, we're all adults, um, you know, you come up with proposals and then you bring those proposed proposals to vote.
We're a representative form of government, so the people up here, you all voted for to make decisions.
I understand that, but the final decision always goes to the people.
No, that's in California. That's, you're in the wrong state. That's California, okay? And that's why nothing gets done in California right now. But here, we, we actually had...
That's not true at all. I don't know why, how you would comment on that. Do you live in California? Are you happy about, I mean...
No, I'm not actually happy at California right now.
But you don't live there?
No, but I know enough about it that it doesn't work.
Oh, so you're educated there too now?
We have, um, we've had four meetings.
That's pretty disrespectful.
I don't think that, well, I think really if your curiosity is piqued, I wanna fill in the blanks because Ms. Geiger probably didn't.
Sure.
We had four meetings on the field. We had our engineer come. We had posters after posters and comments, the Little League parents, the soccer parents.
Met emails to the town, website, postings everywhere.
People who were against...
She got us enthusiastic about it, so that's a good thing.
Right, but some, sometimes that's, that's not right. So, here's the thing.
I'm learning. I'm, I'm not on time.
So, this was a process, this was a process of what do we do to improve the fields for our children? Okay? My children grew up in town. There were years where they couldn't...
I grew up in town as a child.
Okay, so Mike, there were years that they couldn't play on the fields because they were flooded out, whatever.
I'm an adult child.
Okay. All right, so what happened was through a matter of discussion and discernment and actually an adult conversation, we were able to discern that the vast majority of people did not want rubber infill. Okay? Uh, for various reasons, there's, there's some scares about it. And so, fine, we asked Andy, find a substitute. And what he did was he found the cork infill or another organic infill, but not rubber infill. So, we went through the process on the infill. And now, we're going through the process of what we're going to actually do. Um, and you're coming in on the kind of the tail end, so...
Which is why I, I wanna be on the vote on because, I mean, I'm glad that you guys did all of this work. It's amazing.
Well, it's great. Then I suggest...
That's why we voted you in, but now if it's like A or B, you give a vote.
Well, you know what then?
You don't say that, you know what, like, I, you know...
Well, tell me what your opinion is then, from what you heard.
So, I think what you're thinking about, it would be called a referendum.
Okay.
That would be where the public, now, we could do a referendum from the mayor council or the public can also do a referendum. Now, if the public does a referendum, I'm not sure.
Are you giving legal advice?
Ed, there are very limited circumstances on when a referendum can be in and this is probably not one.
Oh, but, but since you're there...
You could, you could still take it a, a server.
Right, but, but that would be what I think Rashma might be referring to, where the people get a choice and I, I'm not giving a legal opinion here, Anne Marie, just saying. I think that's what she's referring to.
Mr. Ray, what, what is your opinion since you're at the microphone in terms of the field? Like, what, what would you want?
What would I want? I mean, the way I always look at things is very analytical and very logically. That's just the nature of my work as well. And given that we have enough data points of what works better, so, you know, maybe California does too of where they've built...
No, no, but our field.
No, no, so what I'm saying right now is if you were, you did all your research, you would say in option A, you know, we have these, these, whatever the, the turf was the issue. And in...
There's turf versus stuff.
And then in option B, you just have grass, right? And so, if you as, were giving me these two options, you would give me basically under option A, here's what happens. Basically, you don't have a field for a year and a half, but given that we're a collaborative, benevolent town, we will negotiate with Edgewater, Fort Lee to be, for the kids to be able to play, uh, to play. And in, you know, and then you go down that analysis under option B, because clearly the issue to me right now is turf, no turf. I mean, I, like, and if that's become the issue, you do an analysis and then you, then you ask your, then you ask the citizens, okay, well, these are the two things and which one do you like better?
Right, so we had, uh, eight permutations, um...
Right, so right now, from all your permutations, the only difference, right, that people are having issues about are turf, no turf.
No, it's actually now it's in between, like, partial turf, partial stuff.
Okay, so all it is is whether there's turf or no turf, right? Am I right? Is it turf or no turf?
No, no.
So, in, in the ones that you like, do you like turf or no turf?
I like the combination, number six. What I refer to as number six.
Is there turf or no turf?
There is turf and there is...
Okay, you like tur- turf.
No, no, I like both.
Ellen, under yours, do you like turf or no turf?
No, you're out of order. You're out of order now. You don't get to do that.
Oh, I don't get to do that.
You don't get to do that.
All right, I apologize.
All right.
I'm gonna have a vote.
We're gonna have a vote and you're, you're free to vote people out of office if you don't want, like to vote.
All right.
Or you're free to vote.
I'm a nice citizen.
You could run for office.
I don't know anything about you, like, I have no opinion. I'm just trying to analyze things.
That, right, so we went through eight different permutations and we're at the tail end of the process. And it's unfortunate that you're joining us so late. I would have loved your input earlier. Yes, sorry.
Hi, how are you? Thank you so much for coming, first of all. Um, uh, and we, we need the second Wednesday of every, of every month. That's wonderful. We like, we, we wanna see you excited. Um, the, the issue here is not just turf or no tur- turf. Uh, let me just explain why. I'm the head of, I'm in charge of the rec, uh, committee. Uh, Richard is our recreation director. He's sitting right up here. Richard? Okay, hi. Okay, so, um, it's not just the, the, these maps, these, um, scenarios that Andy put together for us. There was other analysis that Richard and Paul Duffy, who's the assistant rec director, put together on usage. And the issue here is that on an all-grass field, no matter what anyone wants to say, it will not, but the amount of usage that we have, and I'm thankful that our, our town is growing, we have more children playing sports, we're improving our recreation department, and we only have one field. Unfortunately, we did not plan properly, thinking forward that the town was gonna be growing and buy the property when we should have. That being said, this is what we have and we have to do the best with what we have for our children, right? So, all grass will not sustain. And Andy, you're, I don't know, were you here at the caucus meeting at start at six-thirty?
I did hear that. I did hear that. That's why I said that it's not...
And it's unfortunate because we're on rock.
And he gave us the, the opportunity to...
Right, and he's, and he, um, what you didn't hear him say was, which was our other meetings, Englecliff's is built on rock. So, yeah, so no matter what, what, what you do with natural grass, it's gonna compact and the water's gonna lay and it's gonna flood. So, no matter what money you put into natural grass and with the best maintenance, it's still going to deteriorate and not hold up. So, we have to figure out how do we balance in listening to all of our residents and what they want and what they like and don't like and find a happy medium to be able to maintain our programs, give, be, be a competitive recreation program, right? And, um, keep the beauty of grass, which is why we went, sent him back to the drawing board and he came back with four, uh, drawings using, I think we're at the twenty-eight percent mark, give or take percentages, okay, on turf to grass, which I'm ecstatic that he was able to find everything that the residents requested, we requested. I mean, listen, in a compromise, everybody's gotta give a little bit. Nobody ever gets a hundred percent of what we want.
I one hundred percent agree with that.
So, and unfortunately, if we don't act and make a decision, there's no decision this year again. So, the children who have, we had a very rainy season this year. Majority of games got rained out.
But, you know, and...
So, we have to make a decision.
What I always feel...
And by the way, we've been talking about this since 2010. This is not the new issue.
But, um, anyway, moving, moving on, I think, you know, when you're at this point and in, in general, like, what should happen or why I'm shocked more people within the community haven't said this, or if they have, I'm not sure about that, is you say, okay, is you say, okay, you know, based on, as the council people and as the mayor, we haven't been able to decide whether we want some turf or no turf. Because you may not be the expert. Ellen Park may not be the expert. What I can tell you is we have very intelligent, engaged people, including yourselves and other citizens within our community that deserve to say, okay, let me also contribute. Because our lovely mayor and council people, thank God, they gave us both of these options. And now let us pick.
We, we actually, we're seeking consensus. And if you go back and look at the videos from those special meetings,
They were packed.
It'll, it'll, it'll catch you up. There're probably about 70 or 80 comments of people coming in through the door. There's a line out the door.
But they're still at the same point.
No, we're not, actually.
No, no.
We're voting tonight.
I just saw the seven, you know...
We're gonna vote tonight on the recommendations.
And if you guys, and if you got, how do I know that, you know, there was consensus here?
There's gonna be a vote.
Because I didn't sense the consensus when I was listening.
It's majority rule, okay? It's not unanimous.
So how do I know you're not gonna badger someone? Like, you know?
Badger?
What does that mean?
Why would I badger anyone?
I'm just asking.
They're free to decide what they want.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just...
Okay, I think you're, you're kind of out of time, because now we're getting repetitive. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, give a motion to close.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor of... Somebody, please. All in favor.
He said second.
Okay, let's go.
All right, we're gonna take a little five-minute recess.
Two minutes.
Give it a recess.
Two minutes.
Yeah, we do.
You have to make a motion. You can't just... Anne-Marie, guys, you can't just get off the dais. You have to make a motion.
Okay, we're back in session, folks. We have ended our public portion. We've taken a little recess. And we are now speaking to the resolutions. We'll go one at a time. The clerk will read them in and ask for a motion. So, resolution 124, please, Madam Clerk.
124, acceptance of 2016 audit. I need a motion and a second. So moved.
Second.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
125, corrective action plan for 2016 audit report. I need a motion? So moved.
Second.
I need a second.
A second, yes.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Sure. Corrective action plan are items that were found, ma'am.
Can you ask them to stop talking a little bit?
Okay, um, just excuse me. Um, when you're done, we'll start, okay? Is that okay? You're done? All right, let's go.
Corrective action plan is just some maybe little deficiencies that we, they, the auditor may have found within the departments. And he, um, he, he reported on it. And our CFO made a plan to correct them, which we've all, we have addressed every one of them, and there weren't that many. This is just the corrective action plan saying, they've been addressed, they've been corrected.
And it's in there at the tie?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's done, it's done every year, right?
Correct, it's every year. So 125, uh, counsel persons of versa?
No, I was just missing that tax comment, right? I'll do that.
That wouldn't be there. That would be, like, I'll, I'll give you an example. I'll give everyone an example. So, um, do we accept the check? And I wouldn't give it right away to the finance department, which then makes it be a 72-hour deposit versus the 48-hour deposit, which we're supposed to legally deposit within 48 hours. The auditor would have caught that, written it in the report. Checks must be deposited within 48 hours. So the plan is, you know, that we would respond quicker. That's all that is. So a tax appeals would not be in there.
No, um, my question is, the, uh, the $375,000 that keeps coming up at the, uh, the mayor council meeting, where we...
That has nothing to do with this.
But shouldn't that be under the notes?
No, 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 no. We're, we're voting on resolution 125.
I understand that.
We'll have to discuss that later.
Mayor, I...
It's not relevant.
If it's something that has to be included in the, uh, under the notes, if it's something that has to be corrected, and, you know, um...
The professionals we rely on have taken care of this for us.
But it's not in there.
It doesn't have to be in there.
It's not in there. If it's not in there...
It's in the budget, isn't it?
It's, it's... Look, we're on 125.
Is what's needed to be in there? If you're questioning the judgment of the professionals, that's a separate issue. But every year, this is put on the agenda to accept the audit and accept the corrective plan. They make the correction plan, we don't.
No, I understand that. But if it's something that shouldn't have been, um, you know, taken out from a capital account, let's say, the $375,000.
The Roberts, the Roberts rules of order that we all follow mean that when we're voting, that's what we're doing. We're voting.
Don't, don't, ma'am, I may have missed the finance chair.
Zaverta was voting.
No, I'm just discussing.
There's a discussion, ma'am.
I asked a discussion.
You did, you did ask for it.
But I brought it up. It's okay.
But this is, this doesn't belong in there. So I'm not trying to, I don't understand what you're trying to say.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
That, that issue was brought up to the CFO?
That issue was brought up by, um, Ms. Steinow to the CFO. And the CFO told her, and I was with her, that it was done correctly. So I understand there was a lot of discussion up here about that. And repeatedly, it's brought up. But he told us it was done correctly. And I can't second, second guess our CFO. And he's telling us it was done correctly. You know, and it was asked. Because they put open requests, and they had questions about it. And it was asked. And that, and that's all the information that I really do have. So.
That's vote.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
It passes me.
Okay, 126.
126, authorized change order number one to Stefano Contracting Corporation. I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
127, award 2017 Riverside Cooperative to D and L paving contractors. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 128, hire full-time DPW Tyler I Felice, and I forgot to add, with a CDL license. Oh, it is it?
It's there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have it in mind. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 129, approved bicycle ride through Anglewood Cliffs.
So moved.
Second.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 130, approval of county board judgment 270 Silven. If anyone needs to recuse, please do so. Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
We need a motion for the next one. New motion.
Do you use the microphone, Mr.?
It's on.
So moved.
Second.
Council motion?
Carol moved.
If only you could.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 131, authorized shared services agreement with county and borough for roads.
So moved.
Second.
Race.
All right, who's her? Zaverta?
Gloria, uh, initiated.
Okay, Gloria. Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 132, authorized clerk to solicit RFQ for accounting.
Discussion.
Sure.
Just being questioned more than that. Is this, this is something we should, we do every year? Just didn't do it last year, is that...
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I need a...
I'll make a motion.
A motion, I need a second?
Second.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 133, authorize island tech services state contract. I need a motion? So moved.
Second.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 134, authorization to extend the not-to-exceed account for current labor attorney. I need a motion?
Discussion.
Okay.
I have more question. So, is there a reason, um, a reason it went up so much? And it seems to be, what, we allowed it 50,000 last year? And was that, or we allowed 25,000 last year?
No, it was 50?
It was 50.
I thought it was 60, to be act, to be honest. I'm not sure, but I thought, no.
So, oh, oh...
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Our budget was 50 this year.
So we're just asking to go to 75, is that...
That's right.
Okay. And is, is there a reason, like what?
Yeah, so there was a union negotiation. It probably took longer. I don't know if there's anything else.
That's, that's the, I don't know if I can use the right term, but my color again.
We had that last...
We also had a hearing that he had to represent the borough.
Did he get a hearing? I think he's got it. He's assisting in the personnel policy.
Policy manual.
Personnel policy manual.
Okay, so we went through the 50. Would you say any, okay? Just want to clarify.
All good?
I'll move that.
He's assisting in the Moore case, too.
Okay. Uh, you moved it?
Yep.
Second, please?
Second.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yeah, yes.
135, award bid for elevator subcoating inspection services. I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Does it say who it is, or...
Yeah. Yes. It's in...
It's home inspection corporation? That's the name of the company? Okay.
And it's the same company we currently have.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It wasn't somebody in the notes, so.
Oh, okay, got it. Uh, Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
136, extend emergency medical services contract. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
137, authorized clerk to solicit RFQ for emergency medical services.
So moved.
Second.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 130... No, two different ones. Two different, there's a lot of bicycle going on. 138, approved bicycle ride through Anglewood Cliffs for bike MS.
So moved.
Zaverta? Whoa.
Yeah.
Counsel... Oh, Park, I apologize. Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 139, amend union agreement with USWA.
So moved. Second.
What, what's the change on it?
Uh, it was just a typo on a date.
Okay.
That's it. So it was, uh, M. Park? And whoa?
Yes.
Okay. Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 140, Suez Road restoration agreement. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
One, approved television donation from Senior Citizens Club to Holy Trinity.
And Madam Clerk, if I might just have a comment here. I am, I read the resolution and I don't think there is a violation of the tenet of separation of state from church. I think this is not an objectionable resolution.
Thank you. I know that. I need a motion?
Sooner or later.
I know, it's not.
It's also very untelevised.
It is. Uh, I'm sorry? What was it?
I didn't.
Okay, and who said?
I did. I seconded.
Okay, Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woe?
Yes.
One forty-two, approving settlement with S. Mira. I need a motion?
Before you go to a motion, I'd just like to remind the council that we did vote in favor of this settlement on May tenth. The vote was five to nothing. I urge the council to take a vote in accordance with your fiduciary obligation. The settlement certainly is beneficial. I've recommended it. Uh, the JIP has approved it. The labor attorney and the borough administrator were carefully involved in it. I consulted with the chief during early negotiations and before the May tenth meeting. Uh, I, I think that we have covered all the bases. And while there may be some, as the mayor said, some compromises, that is what a settlement agreement is. And this would take one of them and possibly another lawsuit off the table of the borough.
I'd like to just add also that the agreement today, tonight, reflects exactly what had been agreed to in the prior meeting when we approved it, when Councilman Zaverta introduced it, and when he moved it, actually. So, if anything, we got a better deal today than we had done.
Um, and I also, I think Councilwoman McMorro, you don't have a, you do not recuse on the Moore case, correct?
No.
You need to say yes or no. Okay.
No, I did not. But, uh, under advice of council, I do not have a conflict.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Right, exactly.
We talked about it.
Wait, I'm sorry, Borough Attorney, can you just repeat what you said? I didn't hear you.
Uh, Councilwoman McMorro discussed with me whether or not she has a conflict, and she's indicated that she doesn't have a conflict.
Didn't she have seen last time?
That's not a recusal.
No, I'm just asking you. I didn't have all the information.
She did say last time. But that's not a recusal.
And I stated for the record, I didn't have the information.
All right. Comment? May I make a comment, please?
Yeah, sure.
So, I, although I, um, I did, I did ask Ann Marie, our Borough Council, to move forward with, with the agreement, it also was stipulated, and can I say in closed session, that, that I expected her to go and try and negotiate out certain terms of that agreement. Um, and, and everybody knows I was kind of torn about it anyway. So, I just want to make that clear, that that was not, in my opinion, a vote to settle, it was a vote to have her, allow her to go and negotiate.
I, I understand what you're saying, but the actual resolution approved all of the terms, okay? That's the resolution.
Correct.
What happens in the sidebar, in terms of trying to do better, we did do better, but we didn't get what you wanted.
I understand.
But you still approved the terms.
And certainly, there is a, there is a certain judge that thinks that the settlement was approved on May tenth.
Well, we can agree to disagree on my understanding. I'm not an attorney, so I understand if I...
I know.
But it's fine.
And just so you understand, uh, you know, at this stage in the game, and with the approval of Scott Moore and his counsel, with the approval of Chief Seoff's attorneys, who represent him in the litigation against him, with the approval that this council demonstrated, I have to tell you that not passing the settlement puts this borough back into additional litigation to enforce the prior settlement, and just puts a whole nother delay of three, four, or six months until some court says they did the settlement on May tenth. I understand you have a vote now, but it's merely to approve the, uh, the agreement that we did, and I put on the record on May tenth. So, all right, I'm sorry, I've had enough. I've said enough. Thank you.
Just have a motion, please.
Sooner or later.
Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Um, no.
E. Park?
I think we're allowed to change our minds. I'm going to say no.
O.?
No.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woe?
Yes.
Mayor, it's a tie?
Yes.
And mayor breaks tie, it passes.
Thank you, Ann Marie.
One forty-three, approving request of installment payments to the JIP regarding S. Mira. I need a motion?
Sooner or later.
Councilperson Zaverta?
I guess it doesn't matter now, and so, yes.
Yes, you want to hang over time.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woe?
Yes.
Uh, one forty...
For the record, I'm going to recuse.
So, you recuse. Ann Marie, bring us up to date on one forty-four, Senate House Counselwoman McMorro exists, left.
Uh, yes, as we, as stated in the resolution that is on the agenda, we discussed briefly in closed session, and Councilwoman McMorro, this is on the matter of McMorro versus Borough. The matter was settled between the parties and with the court back in December, December of two thousand sixteen. It really doesn't matter. A recusal doesn't mean she has to go away. She just can't participate. So, in any event...
With this kind of...
In any event, that's fine. Or, the matter was settled in December of two thousand sixteen. Uh, it was settled with the court and between the parties. Uh, this, um, this council approved the resolution on January one about the settlement, not to interfere or stand in the way of the settlement. JIP did do the settlement, it went through the court procedure for approval. It's now been approved by a court order with an additional supplemental certification of the plaintiff in that case, Michael McMorro. We are merely approving the settlement that the court approved already.
Ann Marie, may I make a motion to amend that resolution to just put the amount in?
He can make, he can make that motion.
Yeah, we had that discussion.
I second that motion.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. By the way, for the public sake, we didn't actually approve the settlement. We just told the insurance company that we wouldn't stand in their way of settling. Um, I just don't feel right about paying anyone anything in these cases. Um, that's just my nature, just, you know, enough said. Okay, fine, three hundred, whatever, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
It will be in the resolution and the releases will be available.
Okay.
You just need to leave one door open, it's a public meeting, but you can't tell them to not make noise up there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council, I need a motion?
Sooner or later. Second.
Who was the second?
I do.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
I just want to say that, um, I didn't get this release until five forty-five today, and it was dated, the release was dated June seventh. It's been, I don't know, over a month. I just got it at five forty-five today, so I'm going to vote no.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
I'm sorry.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woe?
Yes.
Somebody please get Councilwoman Mc...
Thank you.
One forty-five. Authorize the retention of computer forensic consultant. I need a motion?
Sooner or later.
Councilperson Zaverta?
This is for the police department or the borough in general?
It's with respect to any of the litigations where it's necessary.
Or appropriate. Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
We're going to make every effort first to see if the JIP will address the issue. We could just put that into the record first?
Yeah, so we're trying to get the JIP to pay for it, but the borough needs to defend itself, and this is the next step in defending itself, is hiring this consultant.
So, wait a minute, why can't we ask JIP first and then vote on it? Why do we have to...
Because we have litigations to aggressively defend, and we have potential counterclaims to assert.
I'm going to make, I'm going to make an all my effort to move on this, this week, to get a JIP approval, but it's still okay to vote on it. I'll try and get the JIP approval right away.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Uh, yes, I'm okay with that.
It has enough to exceed in there.
Yeah, and you're going to talk to the JIP, I believe that.
E. Park?
Again, I didn't receive the revised agenda till four twenty-nine P.M. today, so I'm going to vote no.
But you had the prior versions of the agenda, right?
Nope, yes, and these are, we're not on it.
Okay. All right, say something, ma'am.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woe?
Yes.
One forty-six, authorize retention of investigator for noncriminal police internal affairs matters.
Discussion, please.
I'm going to be with you.
Okay, just a minute, you can just send the order, you don't have to go get back there.
You can't participate, it doesn't mean you have to debate yourself.
Yeah, just fill in...
You can't participate. That recuse means do not participate.
I need a motion?
Discussion, please.
Discussion, sure.
And let me, let me just make a few comments.
Please.
We had this on the agenda a few months ago, and things are different now. I, on the matter that we had under consideration then, I reviewed it, and we've moved on from that. This is a general resolution. It has to do with if there is a necessity for this, and you will see that I have changed it from the very first paragraph, number one, that says it shall be subject to the approval of the Bourbon County Prosecutor's Office and/or the Attorney General's Office, or by a court order allowing us to do it. I want to make that clear, that we're not just going to run out and hire a special investigator. Someone of higher authority in the borough needs to approve this. And then, the rest of it is pretty general, too. I do not apply it to any particular matter. But discussion, do you have any other, do you have any questions?
We keep adding to the tab because we budget for this.
Yeah, I understand. Uh, perhaps I should have had a closed session on this, but I can't, I can't discuss the backbone of this.
There are litigations that require this, and other hearings that require this. Uh, we can't, we can't defend the borough without doing things that, independent of the people that we have running some of our departments.
I have a vote.
I need a motion?
Sooner or later.
Second. E. Park?
Councilperson Zaverta?
No.
E. Park?
Again, I just want to say this was added at four twenty-nine tonight. There's no discussion, and you can't talk about the background, so my vote is no.
O.?
No.
Councilwoman McMorro recused in my fadays. M. Park?
Yes.
Woe?
Yes.
Somebody please get Councilwoman Mc...
Thank you.
One forty-five. Authorize the retention of computer forensic consultant. I need a motion?
Sooner or later.
Second. E. Park? Councilperson Zaverta?
No.
E. Park?
Again, I just want to say this was added at four twenty-nine tonight. There's no discussion, and you can't talk about the background, so my vote is no.
O.?
No.
Councilwoman McMorro recused in my fadays. M. Park?
Yes.
Woe?
Yes.
One forty-seven?
No, it doesn't pass.
No, it doesn't pass. Correct. One forty-seven, authorize the investigation of the creation, management, safeguarding, and dissemination of documents and communications. I need a motion?
Discussion, please.
Mayor?
I don't even have this on my...
Just add it on. Last minute.
Sure. Ed, you have a question? It's, it's one forty-seven.
Yeah, what is it? As we got it so late, I didn't even get a chance to look at it.
It's in your packet.
Again, you can't send this stuff out. It's important stuff, and you send it out, it's like...
Four thirty.
That's fine, Ann Marie will explain it to you.
It's four thirty today.
It's fine, right?
I, I understand, I do understand, but...
It's really not fine, it's really not fine.
Ann Marie will explain it to you.
Why is it fine when you do things?
No, it's fine that Ann Marie will explain it to you.
The way that you're doing it, it's really not fine.
Okay.
We've asked you to send this since Friday, every time. I've been here six months now, and it's always a day of. That's not fair, and it's not right.
So, let me enlighten you both. There have been exchanges of discovery that we've received in the last day or two regarding pending litigations, uh, and documents emanating from the borough. I just use the borough in a general way. It appears that a lot of those documents have been coordinated amongst various plaintiffs within the borough. It appears that perhaps they're using borough resources, on borough time, under borough supervision. I can go on. It just happened, and I wanted to get it in for this...
You said a couple of days ago, so I'm hearing about it at four thirty today.
Well, it happened yesterday, and quite frankly, we, we had to review about fifteen hundred documents over the last day or two.
And you say we?
And this is what we decided...
The people that are named defendants?
Let me answer.
Who reviewed it? You said it took you a day, fifteen hundred pages.
Attorneys representing the borough in these litigations have come back to us, and some of the other defendants, and this is the issue. We need to get a, get control of document creation, management, dissemination. It was all in my statement as to why we need a public safety director, okay?
You had time to write a statement, but you didn't have time to let us know as to what is going on.
I appreciate your theater, however, this all happened over the last day, and I decided that I would recommend to Borough Council a way of dealing with the problem that has presented itself. Um, and to deal with it, I'd like to deal with it this month and not next month.
Same theater, but I have the same complaint every month. Every month I get the agenda on the day of, and I'm tired of this.
You've had this agenda for two days.
This was just added on today, at four thirty today, correct?
Right, so I appreciate the drama, but this was just added on because it just surfaced. Okay?
All right. Okay.
All right, well, you don't have to vote for it, then.
You know my vote already.
But you know what? I'm up here to defend the borough. I don't know if you're going to do that with me. I encourage you to do it with me, because that's where our fiduciary duties lie.
That's right.
Defending this borough.
The borough.
Not, not your political party, the borough. That's where our fiduciary duties are, okay? Let's go.
May I have a motion?
Sooner or later. Second.
One forty-seven. Um, Councilperson Zaverta?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
Nope.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woe?
Yes.
Mayor, it says tie. Would you pass your vote?
Yes.
Where do we get the money in the budget? We didn't budget for any of this stuff, and you just keep adding to the tab. It's ridiculous. I mean, this guy has some fiduciary responsibility for the borough. This is ridiculous.
I think that's in-house what's going to be done there.
Not going to have a limit and an hourly rate.
No, that's not, there's no...
Are you, do you prefer having the borough run over by frivolous litigation?
Yeah, I mean, it's just why we need a discussion, not getting things twenty minutes before the meeting starts and...
Well, as I explained, we just got these documents.
I understand.
We just got these documents.
Yeah, every month, that's in-house, that there's no, there's no, there's no expected employee, new employee, or new appointment on that. Please check seventeen one four seven, you'll see what I mean.
Then I got it.
Okay. Uh, we add, the governing body added a resolution, one forty-eight, and I will read it by title, by complete title, since no one has it in their packet. Resolution one forty-eight, authorizing concept number six for Witty Field and Borough Engineer to proceed with same under state contract and/or public bid. Discussion.
One forty-seven, it's one twenty-five thousand, five thousand dollars, huh?
The email packet is in your pocket. We'll put one forty-seven plus, it's in your pocket.
Thank you. I didn't know when you were...
Yeah, that's why I...
He had nobody to read.
He read it. I said no one would read it until the...
I always read it.
It's in your packet.
I read it until the last minute.
It's in, the correct resolution's in your packet. So, I'll repeat it again. Resolution one forty-eight, authorize concept number six for Witty Field and Borough Engineer to proceed with same under state contract and/or public bid. I need a motion?
Brief discussion?
Okay. Brief, that's discussed. The way we're going to do it is Robert's rules. Everybody speaks once, okay? And then, if I want, you can speak again. So, who wants to kick it off? You want it, Ed?
I don't mind.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I'd like to, um, look, we're going to vote on this eventually, we all understand that, and we all agree that things need to be done. I just, I, I didn't get enough answers from Andy to satisfy me as to whether I should vote for partial turf, all turf, or natural grass. Um, I'm in favor of natural grass, that's what I prefer, and he did not satisfy my answers as to why, if we do ten percent of the field in artificial turf for a million dollars, that's going to satisfy the needs. Um, I don't understand that logic at all, and he did not explain it to me. So, I'd just like a little more time to discuss with them, and, and I have asked them the question, and just haven't, tonight, I did not get that answer. Um, I understand field usage, but none of this makes any sense. If we're going to go to a partial, a small percentage of, of artificial turf, and the rest of the field is in natural grass, we still have to, besides paying for the turf, we still have to expend seventy grand a year to maintain the grass portion of the field. Why not just keep it all in grass, do the drainage the way it's supposed to be done, and maintain it properly, and we, and even Andy said, we wouldn't have those problems if it were maintained properly.
That's actually not what Andy said.
He did not say that.
That's what you said. That's what you said, that Andy...
All right, so then, then why would we do ninety percent of the field in natural turf, and ten percent in artificial turf? Again...
Because ten percent gives the children, some, twenty-eight percent gives the children some use of the field when the rest of it can't be used, and that's usually for stretches of days when it rains, right?
And, and there's still no contingency as, as in case something doesn't go right with the construction of the field, or the, the removal of the turf. Look what happened down at Edgewater for Pete's sakes. I mean, you really want to be without a field for five years? We don't have that.
Yeah, well, we also didn't have chemical companies up here.
I understand, I understand, but, you know, who knows? That was actually brought in. The dirt was brought in, not anymore.
Yeah, it was brought in.
So, so, yeah, you know, you, you just don't know, and I think we just need to take a, a moment to pause. We could have a special meeting next week, or we get whatever you want.
We've had four meetings on this.
Do we have a contingency plan if something goes wrong with the field?
This is only to go out to bid.
I understand.
Our, our professionals have to run the job, you know?
I, I get it.
Okay? And I'm assuming our professionals are smart enough not to get filled from, you know, brownfields.
I think Edgewater assumed the same thing.
Well, you know, I don't know what's going to happen there.
So, all, all I'm saying is, I like to have a contingency plan for the kids if, if something does go awry. I don't think there's anything wrong with taking a, a few days or...
Well, that, I mean, that, having a contingency plan is fine. You could do that, but you don't have to wait to do this first, because that's not going to impact this at all. You're still going to do this.
I, I'm okay with, with that. I just want to make sure that we, as a group, we understand that we do have some other concerns to satisfy people.
Well, right now, there's a vote on the table to, on this concept.
On, on that concept, I understand.
It's correct, and that's, you know, and right now, it's just to put it out to bid.
Is there, um, is there any other discussion on number six?
Do you have any comments?
Number eight's a lot less expensive, too, by the way, but...
But also makes you spend the money again in five years anyways.
Right. You don't know that.
Yeah.
No, no, history predicts the future, and you know what they say about doing the same thing over and expecting a different outcome.
Well, we're supposed to be in negotiations or discussions with, um, upper school, and, and finding out whether or not we can utilize that field, alleviating the usage at Witty Field, but regardless, I mean, I don't think all of the public were here for, um, the caucus, but we were given four options, and this, and this time around, it was option six, seven, I'm sorry, five, six, seven, eight, whereas the meetings before, there were options one through four. Now, we had four meetings before about an option for anywhere from two million dollars to four million dollars, and all the time, we only had enough money to bond for a million. So, in, in essence, really, today's caucus meeting was the first discussion of something viable that we can do. And, you know, I told you at the caucus meeting, I am for all grass. I think what we really need is lights, and that was option eight, which was actually, option eight was eight hundred twenty-eight thousand to redo the grass and put a light, and we're within our budget, and we can bond in no problem. It's under our budget, actually, so eight hundred twenty-eight thousand. All the other, um, options are no lights, just turf, and really, the, the biggest portion, I think, was twenty-eight percent was, was number six that you're, yeah, that you're promoting.
Your wishful thinking that natural grass all around is not going to turn into reality for the reasons that we discussed.
Put it more, Mayor, put it more.
And, and for that, I mean, I don't think it's really, I think that amount is not even going to make a difference at that point. I don't even, and I don't agree with the way that this was presented. I have some questions, too.
I understand, you want all turf, all, all grass, rather. You want all grass.
I think if we had to do a budget, and we have to stick to the budget, I would go for the number eight option, which is all grass and lights, which is vi, which is viable, which is under our budget, eight hundred twenty-eight thousand, and that's what I would push. I wouldn't push, um, option number six.
But what you're really pushing is kids to stay home, because they're not going to be able to play when it rains.
for the number eight option, which is all grass and lights, which is vi, which is viable, which is under our budget, eight-hundred-twenty-eight-thousand, and that's what I would push. I wouldn't push, um, option number six.
But what you're really pushing is kids to stay home, because they're not gonna be able to play when it rains.
My kids play all the time, they actually played today.
That's great. So, what, what happened here is, we, we had all those meetings to get to this point.
That was meeting for a four-million-dollar field.
Let me finish. We, we had tried to seek consensus rather than conflict, and as I said earlier, we talked about the infill, then we talked about the coverage, and, and this is the process, we're at the tail end of it now, before we actually have to pull the trigger and do something productive as a council. Uh, yes, Councilwoman Morrow?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman, I know I was at the same meetings as you are, and I'm, and I wanna say this respectfully, maybe you don't remember, we got to this point here, because you and I happened to have agreed that we should have looked at only doing the girl's softball person of the field, and to see how much that would cost. That's what we talked about at that last meeting, and Andy was sent back to come and come with four options. Let me finish, I did not interrupt you, okay? I, I, I hear you, I appreciate your passion about your opinion, but you're very negative on anything that we wanna do productive here, okay?
Well, just because I don't agree with your option number six.
Excuse me. I know you keep looking out to the audience for, for approval, but...
You wanna read this?
No, hold on. I, I just would like to say, that this has been going on...
It's actually twenty-one.
I'm sorry, I have kids in Little League, do you?
I had kids in the Little League.
Okay, well, I have the kids in Little League now, okay? And what we need, lights.
So what, you're...
That's irrelevant here, okay?
Okay, so, I, I say no to option six.
You had the floor, now, now she's speaking, okay.
No one's children is any more important than anybody else's children. Just because my children are grown, don't, does not mean that you are more important. My children played with him right there. No, she said, "Do you have children?" I do.
Right. I don't want you to think that I don't care about Little League, because that's what you're telling people.
Right there. Excuse me, I'm not telling anybody any...
Yes, you are.
That, that's irrelevant for this discussion, guys.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. My son played with the young man sitting back there, Mr. Casada, who happens to be on our Recreation Advisory Board, who is in favor of improvements, and spoke out the last time. We need to accept the fact that we only have one field. We don't have a field that gives our children enough playing time, and we have to do, do not interrupt me, wait, it's called control, please. So, what does, let me finish.
Just say it.
It's so disrespectful, we have to, you have a different opinion than we do?
Right, that's right.
That's it.
I wanna actually thank, uh, Dan Casada, because he is on the Recreation Advisory Board, and he's here tonight, doesn't have to be here, so I appreciate you coming.
But the point is, Mayor, that a lot of work went into getting to the point we are tonight, and I don't appreciate people saying that we only had four meetings. This has been going on since I was on the council last time in two thousand and ten, and everyone knows how many meetings has been about this.
I think since, I think numbers...
And you're the head of the Finance Department, and you don't know that we don't, we don't have, we only have enough money to bond for a million dollars, and we had all those meetings in the past, where Little League, everybody was here, and you, and your options were for two and four-million-dollar fields?
Okay, all right, relax. Anybody else have any?
You have to have a plan, you know what that is.
We're working backwards here. We're not.
Why don't you have from the other side here?
Wait a minute, you skipped me.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry, did you want to...
I was responding.
I didn't see her hand raised, so, okay.
It's okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
You were going down.
No, I just responded to her.
Okay, she was responding to her.
I guess we're...
Councilwoman O.
Hi, Danny, good to see you, welcome back. Um, so, I think we're all up here in an agreement, um, that the field needs improvement, um, but I just have a concern about how, how, you know, we are kinda like pushed to making a decision tonight. I mean, we were given, um, the four options, uh, Monday.
Friday. I sent Friday.
I got it on Monday.
It was sent to you Friday? I was sitting in the office when they hit the send button.
Anyway, I, I'm thinking Monday, and, and, uh, please don't interrupt me when I'm...
No, well, then, don't misrepresent that.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, anyway.
What, what did I...
So, we were, we were given four options, um, either Friday or Monday.
And Friday.
Um, today, you know, during caucus meeting, Andy spoke, um, Mary brought up really good questions about what happens if, you know, the, uh, animals, you know, the, uh, pee or poo on the turf. These are the questions that we need answered to, and we don't have that today. And, you know, I know that, um, you know, you wanted to take a vote today for some reason, uh, maybe it's political, maybe it's not political.
Not political.
But, you know, we could, we could, excuse me.
Go ahead.
We could always have a special meeting. We don't have to take a vote tonight. I mean, you make it sound like if we don't take votes tonight, like, something's gonna happen, and, you know, the, the kids are gonna have to stay home, and they can't play sports, but that's not true, we could always have a special meeting.
Andy made the statement that you need to act on this, or you're not gonna have your opportunity. If you don't act tonight, you're going to lose your opportunity to do this.
I appreciate, yeah, let me just say, I, I appreciate the, uh, the, the animal defecation issue, the potential of that, but other people have dealt with this, and I'm pretty sure that we, as a community, can figure out how to clean things that get dirty.
So, let me ask you another question. Um, so, when we were, um, in our caucus meeting, um, I think somebody brought up, um, uh, the fact that we really never went around the room and said, like, which options we're in favor of. Uh, we were kinda like narrowed down to all grass, uh, option number six, and option number seven, and then I saw, like, a couple of you talking in that room, and now, like, we have a resolution to vote on concept number six. When did that happen?
The person that was being asked was the Recreation Director, and in fact, there were a lot of people from the public that came up and asked him, too, am I correct? When you had this, thank you. They were all asking him, I'm gonna think to what he's saying, his recommendation was number six, and I did say that.
Yeah, I appreciate the...
But maybe we should have a vote, because I know Councilman Park has been, from day one, he was against turf. He's always said he wanted grass.
But at the time, yes, I know, true, but, you know, at that time, our meeting, end of our meeting, we accommodated a little bit, uh, top, and then natural grass. I think that Andy told us, oh, another alternative, but that's why, you know, at that time, one time...
You pointed to number six, too?
Uh, yeah, six, or maybe I mentioned number five or six, that I'm preaching about it.
I like seven, too.
Oh, yeah, which one is...
I like six.
Just second.
Rashad likes the whole...
Oh, yeah, six and, six and seven, you know, you remember the last time, we already so many times discussed about this, and we have to move, you know, productive, as, you know, I don't want to tell you to spend another time here, we wanted to make a career, but it, continue, keep, continue talking about it.
Same thing, over and out.
It's a waste of time. We already did so many times, I, I, I...
Well, we need sixty days.
But, you know, that's my opinion, you know, I, I don't wanna spend time here, we have to, we, we have time to discuss about it, we have to make a decision tonight, that's my opinion.
But how come you didn't ask for option eight, or seven, or eight? Why are you...
You, you had your, you had your say. Uh, Councilwoman, would you like to...
So, I think, Mayor, for me, we've had four discussions on this, um, I personally have gotten enough information where I believe I can make a, uh, informed decision, uh, on behalf of the town. Um, I always supported a progressive approach, which is having a part, partial turf, partial grass. Uh, option six is what I mentioned in previously in the council meeting, I'd like to see the turf pushed off to the far end of the field, I'd like to see the weight of our residents go off to the far side of the field, um, so relative to the Little League and to soccer, which are two biggest sports here, um, I think option six addresses that, and, um, the last one was just having that quick conversation with Rashad in the room to see where he stood, and, uh, he supported number six.
Thank you. Everyone having had their say, I'd like to have a motion.
So moved.
Wait, I, I'm sorry, I, I need a clarification, so are we saying option six with the lights, or without the lights?
Right now, it's with the lights.
With the lights.
We're going, we're going out to bid. When the numbers come back, and if they're higher, though, then we'll look at it there, and in the interim, if they are higher, I am going to immediately, when the administrator gets back, uh, if there's a, if it, if it comes out exactly at these higher, this is the higher numbers, he, he bid it out higher as an estimate, if it does, it's an additional fourteen thousand dollars as a down payment. Um, we have Recreation Trust Funds, that's what they're for, to make all that hard work that we did last year in raising money through donations, is for if you wanna take something to use it as a down payment, as an improvement, we can look at that as well. I'll have to wait for Catherine to get back on Monday, talk to her, but we'll, we'll figure it out somehow, and Andy said, that's worst-case scenario, um, and you'll know better when the number comes in, we have to go to bid first.
That's actually a good answer.
Yeah.
We needed a, no, it's with lights. For bid, and then we're going to evaluate it.
Right.
Do you have a second?
You had a second, I did a motion. Who made the motion?
Second.
The motion, William.
William's second.
Councilperson Deversa?
With the lights, it's above the budget, right?
It is. I just, I just explained to you that it, that this was his worst-case scenario, that's what he said to us, standing there, you guys were already...
Almost one point three billion.
Yeah.
With the lights.
Okay, okay, we're voting.
What's your, what's your point, Council?
We're voting, yes, and then...
We don't have the one point three million dollars.
I just told you, it's a fourteen thousand dollar difference, and some of it will be taken from the Recreation Trust Funds that we raised through donations.
Well, you get those bucks in a row before that, all right.
Councilperson Deversa? No?
No.
E. Park?
I would like all grass and lights, so no.
O.?
I'm not gonna vote yes on something where we don't have enough money in the budget for. I mean, you can't, you cannot, like, go out shopping and buy something when you can't pay for it, right? So I'm gonna vote no.
McMorro?
Absolutely, yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Mayor, it's a tie?
Yes.
Okay, it passes.
All right, thank you. Um, you have a public hearing on ordinance seventeen dash zero seven, ordinance revising fees for building department and property maintenance.
Seventeen oh seven?
Seventeen oh seven.
All right, I have to read these, I have to, okay. Seventeen oh seven, an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Ingle Eclipse to revise, to revise certain fees for chapter nine entitled Building and Housing, and chapter ten entitled Property Maintenance Code. We need a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second. Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
More open, Mayor?
Yeah, if anyone from the public who wishes to just speak on seventeen dash zero seven, ordinance revising fees for building department and property maintenance, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and share your thoughts with us. Yes, sir?
The address is twenty-six count street. What is this thing, um, explain to me.
I'm explaining, less than a minute. The building department fees need to be increased because the state code fees increased, and our code didn't match.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's the whole thing?
That's the whole thing.
So let me ask you something. Can we get, while you're doing this, can we get somebody who, who can help Mr. Malphy check the property?
Ask Deversa if we can hire someone else to the building department.
Well, I think you should.
What'd he say?
Because it would give you money.
We got money.
It would give you money, it would give you money.
Yeah, it's okay.
We're assessing all those things.
The property maintenance issues that you spoke about in past, letters have gone out.
No, I understand that, no, 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 no.
They're being done with, yeah.
Please, I understand, I, I didn't get up for that.
In answer to your question, it's being assessed right now, all of that's being looked at.
It is being assessed.
It's being assessed, yeah.
Okay.
All right, anybody else?
I'm answering my question.
There you go.
Anybody else in the public?
Yes.
I see a notepad, and there's a hand connected to it.
There's a notepad up in the air.
Very good that you're moving forward to bring our code, our fees, and everything up in accordance with what we're permitted to charge, good job. But on reading section G violations and penalties, any person or persons, association firm, blah, 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 says no less than two fifty for the first offense, five hundred for the second, one thousand for the third, and it also says the continuation shall constitute a new offense. Why don't you change it for those that are repeat offenders and have not brought their, have not dealt with the thing, to be punitive, truly punitive, not so it resets to two fifty, five hundred, and a thousand, but keeps growing daily, as you do in many kinds of fines, when you fail to pay or fail to correct the problem?
There are, there are, uh, there are cases and laws that, there are cases and laws that apply to how we assess penalties and fines, and while the state, state agencies often have the indulgence of charging a hundred dollars a day until it is fixed, we may, we, we don't have that ability in everything, though you could increase if you wanted to, you could put five hundred for the first defense, seven fifty and a thousand, you could go up to two thousand, any what range you want to, but remember, you do deal with, you are dealing with citizens, and usually, the first one is the cheapest, and that's enough to take care of the problem. So, maybe you wanna consider changing the others, but look, you're on second reading already, so, let, we can't make a change now. You vote for the ordinance now, and then you amend it later if you want to.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the...
No, this is a second hearing.
But you never present? You don't, you don't get...
I'm sorry, this is the second reading, correct? We have to pass it as written. It's been published already.
Yeah.
There is no change after you've had a first reading unless it is a non-substantial typographical type of error. You can't subs, you can't substantive change.
Now, you have to be recognized, it was come up, yeah.
First reading.
No, we, we, Mrs. O'Shea, I, 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 I need...
First reading, everybody can see the ordinance.
Above it.
So, the second public reading is public comment, that's the first time the public gets to see the ordinance. So, you know, if you wanna comment on it, it's, it's the first time you see it.
You can't make substantial changes on a second reading.
You have to pass and then amend it.
No, you can.
No.
If you're, if you're, if, when are you...
It's the second, yeah, it's just the second reading, and it was in the newspaper and full.
It was in the newspaper already.
Huh.
Okay.
When does it last month and June? Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, they have it.
Okay, but, if, if, I'm sorry, I know that I am correct, I've been doing this for many years, we cannot make a substantive change at second reading. You pass this, and if you want to do an amendment, we'll do it next month.
Right, you have to pass it, and then if you like the ideas that are being presented...
And, Mrs. O'Shea, I will address your concern when I look at the, the procedures.
Okay, well, I would, I would ask then, if that's gonna be the way it is, when we have a first reading, like, three ordinance from tonight, you should give us a copy, so that we can read it at the first reading, because you usually just introduce the mic title.
Why don't we post it?
Yes, we don't know what's in it till you get the public here.
We, I understand your concern, and I will work with the Borough Clerk to look at how the process is being handled.
Let's hear it from the clerk.
And by the way, it's in the newspaper already. Go ahead, Ms. Clerk. It's in the newspaper, too.
Once it gets posted in the, once it gets posted in the newspaper, anyone from the public can come request a copy for free, even by email, and, so, you have that right. You can email me, it's not an Oprah, but you have to wait till it's posted, and typically, I post it right away, so once I send it to the newspaper, it takes them forty-eight hours to print. Once you see it, shoot me an email, can I have a copy of the ordinance, and I'll gladly email it to you. The public is entitled to a free copy of an ordinance once it gets printed.
Okay. All right. All right, anybody else in the public?
We'll look at it here.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Shea. Okay, I, I don't see anyone else to comment, can I have a motion to close?
So moved. Second. Home favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we have a vote?
Uh, can I have a motion, please, for seventeen oh seven?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Councilperson Zerosa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, we're on first reading of ordinancees seventeen oh eight, seventeen oh nine, seventeen oh seven. Sheriff, would you please take care of that?
The following three, the public hearing, will be on Wednesday, August ninth. Seventeen oh eight, an ordinance establishing applicant fees for special meetings of the Borough of Inglebou Cliffs Planning Board. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Who was the second?
Here.
Councilperson Zerosa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Seven, seventeen oh nine, an ordinance fixing salaries, wages, and compensation for all salary-appointed elected officers within the Borough of Inglebou Cliffs in the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey. Uh, again, public hearing will be August ninth. I need a motion?
Discussion?
Yes.
Were you allowed to discuss at this reading?
Thank you. That's a good one. Yeah, I can.
Um, so, all right, I'm, I'm not, I'm not exactly, I have listened to the mayor, I listened to, um, comments. I'm not sure why we really need a public safety director to incur another cost. What? We're not on that one.
I thought we were on that one. Oh, I'm sorry. I was going ahead of you. We'll go back to that.
Guess we know what you're doing. After listening to all that.
All right, seventeen oh nine, salaries, I need a motion?
So moved.
Councilperson Zerosa?
It was the last one. I'm anxious to get to that one.
Councilperson Zerosa?
Me, too.
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Ordinance seventeen ten, an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Inglebou Cliffs to add new provisions to create the position of public safety director. I need a motion?
Discussion?
No, sure, I could discuss it.
All right, thank you.
And I promise I won't read my speech again.
Thank you. You know, again, you know, listening to all, everybody, I'm not sure why, why we need a public safety director. I shouldn't, i- if we're not happy as a mayor and council with the hierarchy of the, of any department for that matter, what, what good does it do to keep the people that you think aren't doing the job properly and, and put somebody in charge of them? That, that to me seems a little ludicrous. So we're incurring an extra cost for somebody to babysit the people you're not happy with the job they're doing. I, isn't it, doesn't it make more sense then to eliminate those people?
I'm, I'm not commenting.
You weren't ready for that one, but that, but that.
No, no, I'm not commenting. But is that, is that what you want?
I'm not saying that's what I want, but I'm just asking, doesn't that make more sense?
Well, you're raising it.
Right, so why are we hiring? I'm asking you, you brought it up.
I have no comment, but is that what you want?
Um, I don't want a public safety director. I, if you're not happy with the people who are in charge of them, why are we, why are we keeping? Why do you feel the need to keep them and, and hire a babysitter?
Okay, anyone else have any discussion points?
That's, is it not gonna talk about? That's why it's called discussion.
No, no. I'm talking.
Oh, okay.
No, in the advice of council, I'm not gonna discuss that.
So.
We're dealing with, we're dealing with the problems that we have to a public safety director and the other resolutions that we passed this evening.
Viva. Really? This is, this, that's not a discussion at all.
No, you can have a discussion.
What, by myself? You wanna talk to myself?
No, you, you know, you.
Hello?
And.
Myself?
And you have, you have to realize that that's at least partially a rhetorical question, right?
No, I don't get it.
Because, because who do you know in municipal employment is, is terminable at will?
But so, so then why are we adding to, why are we adding more cost to the taxpayers when, and that's not solving the problem?
Because we have dysfunction abounds, and I've been speaking about it all night.
So that, so then address.
And months and months, and we're, it's not getting any better, it's getting worse. And now I see it for myself, because I'm looking at documents that are being produced in litigations, and it's clear that we are being gamed.
So we're gonna add, we're gonna add to the taxpayers more?
No, in the long run, the taxpayers are going to save a lot of money, okay? Because we're going to fix the problems, and we're going to fix everything this long.
Maybe that's why we have discussion, because it just doesn't make sense to me to hire a babysitter, to, to watch the people that we don't think are doing a good job.
Any, anybody else have anything? Otherwise, let's have like those. Do we have a motion?
No, we don't have a motion. Need a motion, please? Anyone else on discussion?
No, I do, I'm just curious, like, how, how do you think, Mayor, that a public safety director is going to choose out your power? Um, you know, we didn't have this many lawsuits before you became the mayor.
That's right.
Um, so, you know, maybe there's a, a question with the leadership.
There is.
And I don't believe, believe that the public safety director is a solution. And we don't have the money in the budget. Where's this money coming from, really? Like, you know, you're just hiring people.
Good point. Good point. Um, as I said before, the key sentence of what I said was, "The coordination between senior members of the ECPD leadership and the local Democratic Party is blatant and will finally be exposed, not by me, but by their own hand, emails and documents." And that's what we're going to fix.
How about we hire somebody to counsel us? I mean, every time, another add-on and add-on.
Well, perhaps you need counseling, I don't, okay? I, I mean.
But this is just a, this is an ordinance creating a position.
Okay, anybody else? I'd like to have a motion.
You know, what is a motion?
You, you already spoke. No, it's Robert's rules. No, it's Robert's rules. You're just playing now.
Let's go to the floor.
Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Councilperson Zerosa?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
Absolutely no.
Should we budget for this one either?
McMorro?
Change, change, change.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Mayor, it's a tie?
I'll break the tie, yes.
Okay.
All right, uh, committee reports, um, we skipped over those last month, so you have two months' worth of committee reports. I'm expecting a lot from everyone on council. Uh, Councilman Zerosa, please state your committee.
Lightened.
Okay, anything going on?
Light still on, we had, I mentioned our discussion, we are in our meeting la- last time, so no, nothing new to be put.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilwoman Park?
Um, there is a rise in tick bites, so everybody wear their, uh, deets. Um, also, we were talking about, uh, the flu clinic that we're probably gonna have in November, um, but other than that, everything's fine.
Okay, that was the health department. Uh, Councilman else?
We're keeping our monthly invoice, um, under two hundred dollars, so I think we're doing a great job. Um, that's it.
Okay, Councilwoman McFarrows?
Um, okay, recreation summer camp is halfway through. The kids are having a great time. This year, they have four scheduled field trips along with going to Palisades Pool every week. Our new programs introduced at camp this year were hip-hop dance and flag football. We also have a new program for girls softball, ten and under. There's a travel girls softball team. They're gonna start practicing ten, uh, July tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, and the games will be July fourteenth, uh, fifteen, and sixteen. Rashard left, and, um, that's what I'm thinking. He's, he's doing a great job. He's continually trying to, um, think outside the box, Mayor, and coming up with new ideas and programs.
How many enrollees this year in summer camp?
Um, it's a little over eighty-five.
What was last year?
Um, I'm not sure this year, though, you know.
Did it more or less?
It's a little bit less, but we have, we have, um, the timing of other activities happened to fall on that same week, so that caused some, and, and also, you know, up at the, uh, school this year, we don't have use of the gym, the gyms, they're doing the floors, and some parents made decisions for other things, and I understand that, but this is not your normal year to, to judge that, that way. Um, but, uh, you know, I think that did have something to do with it. What you're gonna see soon, and I, um, I'm gonna ask for some help from our press reporter in the audience, I asked for it once before, but this time I'm definitely gonna reach out to you. Community Pass is ready. We're gonna start, I'm very excited. Rashard left, I had to say, he worked tirelessly in getting this up and ready for us. It will be first utilized for our first big sign-up for soccer, but, um, he's gonna, we're gonna be encouraging everybody to take the tutorial, and we're gonna send something out to the town, helping them to understand how to sign up on there, and it's gonna be exciting. It's gonna be a little bit, getting used to it first, but once everybody gets in there and gets it done, um, you're gonna see it's, it's gonna make life a lot easier for, for everybody, and, um, I think that, that's it, Mayor.
Community Pass?
The next one. Next one.
One minute.
Four to twenty-second. Up to the head.
Councilman Park?
Oh, yes. Last one, we discussed about, uh, a particular area of the foundation, and then we recommended it to the council, and then we discussed about it, and then also, we discussed about, uh, our planning board of these schedules, and today we did it, you know, resolution. And then I remember, I already wondered, plus a home, the survey project will be approved there. That's it. Police Academy ran this year. Unfortunately, I was away during the kickoff, but I understand it was very successful. Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
So I actually went to the kickoff of the Police Academy. It was a lot of fun. They, um, were, yeah, kind of parking orders at the kids, and, um, it was, it was good to see them responding, and, um, I asked the kids if they were running ten miles or twelve miles that day. They, they looked at me very puzzled, followed by a two-mile swim, and, um, and then they got marched off. And then we actually, we worked on getting the rights for, um, a helicopter landing on Witty Field from, um, Hackensack University Medical Center. Um, uh, so that worked out, was Friday, and, uh, seemed like everybody was happy with it. Okay, um, thank you for all your reports. Uh, in terms of unfinished business, new business and old business, I just wanted to bring everyone up to date. A couple months ago, I mentioned that the U.S. Coast Guard was evaluating some new rulemaking, uh, to create forty-three new anchorages at ten sites along a seventy-mile stretch of the Hudson River, uh, from Yonkers to Kingston. Uh, it would be in what we have now, we've regarded as our view shed and also our river because, uh, impacts all of us, and what ended up happening was, um, the mayors of Tena Fly, I, I had them all come down, and we all met with scenic Hudson, met mayors of Tena Fly, Alpine and myself, met with the people who run scenic Hudson. Um, and that was a few months ago. We, we jointly, um, wrote a letter and followed the process along, opposing these anchorages and, and opposing turning the river into an industrial river for a whole host of reasons. Um, and what, what actually prefaced all this was that for the first time in U.S. history, I believe, the laws changed and you could export, uh, gas and crude from the U.S. So the export market's booming, uh, and people want a lot of barges coming down from Albany, which takes, um, North Dakota, uh, fracking oil and gas over, uh, to barges, and they come down the river and they, they get put onto tankers and it gets sold. So what happened was, back in, um, June, on June twenty-ninth, the, um, rear admiral of the Coast Guard just suspended all rulemaking decisions on the plan that I just mentioned. So it's not a victory overall, but it is a small victory, because they put the whole thing off to reevaluate it, and they're going to get even more input, so, um, there's actually, I copied the articles, if you wanna, I wanna leave them out here if anybody wants to read it. The other thing is, we started the bench program, uh, so Catherine, uh, who's not here tonight, she's on vacation, uh, is creating a sponsorship program. You could donate a bench in memory of somebody, just like the trees that, um, we have at Witty Field that are not getting cut down, by the way, uh, despite what Mrs. Zavaro